Good afternoon. Good evening. Seem to have lost my gavel. So we just knocked the session in. City of Lamarck, regular agenda of June ninth, twenty twenty five. Notice is hereby given that the city council of the city of Lamarck, Texas will conduct a regular meeting on June ninth, twenty twenty five, beginning at six P M. Council chambers at eleven oh nine B Bayou Road, Lamarck, Texas, as well as via video conference hosted through Zoom. In accordance with section five, five, one dot one, two, seven, B of the Texas government code, the presiding officer and the quorum of the Lamarck City Council intend to be and will physically be present at eleven oh nine B Bayou Road, Lamarck, Texas. This location will be open to the public and the meeting will be broadcast at this location on channel sixteen and via YouTube. The meeting will, the council will meet for the purpose of considering the following agenda. The meeting has been called to order. Kiara, would you give us a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember District A.
Present.
Councilmember District B.
Present.
Councilmember District C.
Present.
Councilmember District D. And Mayor.
Present. Thank you, Ms. Nance. We are now going to ask our very own Mayor Protem, Joe Campion, to lead us in our invocation. And one last time, Councilmember James Ross, to lead us in our pledge of allegiance. If you are able, please stand.
Dear God, we thank you for your presence with us today. And we certainly invite your presence into this meeting, grant us your peace, your understanding, your guidance. That we be grateful for this opportunity that we have to come together. And may our discussions both be productive and lead to wise decisions. There's always in your great name, we pray amen.
Amen.
... to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under ground, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Campion. Thank you, Mr. Ross. Before we get into our citizens' participation, I believe we are going to move one item to the front for the sake of time. And that item is presentation five, one. I believe, Mr. City Manager, you have made a decision as it relates to the job, the permanent job of Public Works Director. This is a council manager form of government. So council does not have any zero, zip, zilch opinion or perspective. This is clearly your hire and you've made a hire. And so I'll yield the floor to the city manager at this time.
As you were saying, Mayor, the permanent Public Works Director has been no stranger to the city of Lamarck. He has been with our city for about seven years, as well as has been our interim Public Works Director for going on seven months. I am very pleased to report that problems that we have known in Public Works have been addressed as, as early as seven months ago. I am also pleased to report that the efficiency of that department has continued to, to, to be fine tuned when it comes to water loss in the city of Lamarck. We know that that number has been high. And as a sneak peek of a report for next month, because of where we currently sit, rather than six, over sixty percent of water loss, we're sitting at twenty-two percent water loss for the city of Lamarck as it currently stands on today, as well as when it comes to stormwater drainage, when it comes to the mosquito truck, when it comes to all of the aspects of streets and planning for the future of the city of Lamarck. I am very pleased that I have been able to work with this individual for, well, four years in total, but we have found our battle rhythm when it comes to the sense of Public Works. He has given me hard truths. He has given me uncandy coated answers because he knows that I do not require nor like them. And I am pleased to announce to Mayor and City Council, as well as to the rest of staff, as well as to the general public, that Mr. Shannon Bro, please stand, is our new permanent Public Works Director for the city of Lamarck, and he will continue. And I know that he will continue to show the type of excellence that he has already exemplified in his interim position, as well as what he exemplifies every day at his core and the fiber, not only his job, but as a citizen of Lamarck and as a man. And so Shannon, if you would like to say any words, but you don't have to. I know you don't like to, so.
You'll talk into Mike, Shannon, please.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
I just want to first off by saying just my thanks. I know not everybody here is a Christian, so I'm not going to be trying to force my beliefs upon y'all, but every essence of who I am is in Christ. And so I want to first off, start off by thanking God for, because all of who I am today, everything I have accomplished is only because of Him and Him alone. There's nothing I've done, nothing I can do outside of that. Secondly, I want to thank my wife and my two daughters, who've actually showed up tonight to support me. I know she's a little upset. I called her out. She doesn't like when I do that, but I'm the man I am, everything I, I mean, all that I've been able to do is because they push me, they drive me. I see that drain bank account every paycheck I get, so it just pushes me forward on that. Also, I would like to thank a few members from our Public Works Department has came here in support of this. And so I would just like to thank them for all the hard work they do. I know that when all these stats and all these things that have come out, I'm using the face of that, but it's not me. I, it's obviously the Public Works Department as a whole who puts in the work, who, who puts in that time effort that we're out here doing just the, the, the work of the city. Finally, just as my last statement, I know a lot of times public work is seen as public enemy, enemy number one. I know it's an uphill battle. I also know there has been some empty promises. This is no, nothing against council right now at all, but, and also no talk is cheap. So I'm not going to sit here and make all these promises. I do know that there are issues that have not happened overnight. The solutions will not happen overnight, but we will continue to push, we will continue to grow, we'll continue to, to work, and we won't stop until we are where we want to be at. So I just want to thank y'all. I wanted to thank Mr. Pritchett for this opportunity and just everybody else in Public Works that cross their board who has put their faith in me. Thank you.
That was, that was really, really good, Shannon. We are so proud of you. Congratulations. Absolutely. And thank you, young men and women, for coming out to support your leader. It is important for the council to see that the person that Mr. Pritchett has chosen is a person that has the confidence of the men and women of Public Works. And Shannon, I'll say this and move on, but I think that's the longest public work speech I've heard in twenty, in twenty-one years, man. We, James, what do you, James Osteen says you did good, so you did good. All right. We kid, but we do love you and we are very, very proud of you. Thank you. So we'll move now to citizens' participation. And Avery, we are asking if there are any persons online wishing to speak. We have one. If you are online wishing to speak, welcome. We would ask for your, before we do that, let me read the rules. Let's remember, these are requests, they're not the law, but we're asking you to abide. And then we'll get to you online. Citizens' participation limited to three minutes per person. Comments from the public will be heard at this time. Any person with city-related business who has signed up may speak to council, limited to three minutes. You wishing to speak, give the mayor, the presiding officer, your full legal name, your address, and the item you wish to speak about. Compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city may not deliberate on comments. Personal attacks will not be allowed. Personal matters should be addressed to the city manager during normal business hours. Press six to, star six to mute or unmute yourself if you're participating via telephone. Press the unmute button if you're attending via Zoom, smartphone, tablet, or computer. It looks like a microphone icon on your screen. And if you're here in person, when your name is called, you may approach the center aisle and the timer, the three, the three-minute timer, it would be off to your right. Again, so we are clear. The First Amendment of this great country trumps all rules that we may have in this forum, but we're asking each and every one of us to be as respectful as we possibly can. This is a request from the mayor and this council. Now, there is one person online wishing to speak. Welcome, sir or madam. Please give your name, your address, and you'll be heard.
Hello. I see three people online, so I don't know who's going to go first. Can y'all hear me?
We can hear you. You may proceed.
Okay. This is Harvey Freebird. Councilman Joseph Lowery is out of control. This is not speculation, it's a fact. He stormed out of public meetings, doxed private citizens, stalked people who disagree with him. He uses his elected position to harass the public instead of serving it, and now he's crossed into dangerous territory. Councilman Lowery recently, today, went live talking about building a bulletproof kill dozer. Before that, he posted an exact image of Marvin Haymeyer's actual kill dozer. The machine was used to destroy a large part of his town, and Councilman Lowery titled his post, "Sometimes reasonable men do unreasonable things." A lot of people some, supported Haymeyer's actions because they believed he had been pushed to the edge by his corrupt local government. But Lowery isn't the victim of abuse, he is the abuser. He's the bad government actor doing harm to citizens he swore to represent. Everything he's upset about is a reaction to things that he has started. The harassment, the bullying, the threats. People are simply defending themselves from his actions, and they're doing so lawfully, publicly, and with restraint, I might add. Why would he be announcing plans to build this machine if he wasn't planning an attack? Let's be clear, Texas has laws against making terroristic threats. When someone talks, starts talking about building an armored weapon, everybody should take that seriously. These aren't jokes, these are real threats. These are red flags. Texas does not have red flag laws, but the, the people still have rights, excuse me. And in this state, the Second Amendment is a guarantee. Citizens have the right to be armed and prepared to defend themselves, especially when threats come from those in political power. Joseph Lowery has made himself a threat to the people he's supposed to serve. The citizens of Lamarck have been begging police to help them, and they've been ignored. In that silence, Councilman Lowery has been encouraged to escalate his behavior, and now this man is openly making terroristic threats. He's bullied residents, weaponized his platform, and crossed every line of public trust. The people of District C are right to demand a recall and remove him from office. Thank you, council and mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Avery, are there other persons online wishing to speak? No, sir. Thank you. Let's now move to those that are here before us today. This is Vanessa McAfee. Welcome, Ms. Vanessa. Name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Vanessa, and I'm a resident of the city of Texas City. I'm here today because y'all's drama has filtered into my community. And I'm here to bring attention to Councilman Joseph, Joseph Lowery's attempts at what appears to be tax evasion. Councilman Lowery operates a business in the city of Texas City called Six Brothers Concrete and fraudulently applied for and received fifty thousand dollars from the EDC by claiming his Lamarck residential address was also the operating address for his business. Google, Google site images will show business heavy equipment from March twenty twenty till April twenty twenty five. That heavy equipment and his big concrete trucks, it's located at fourteen, fourteen, Highway one forty-six in San Leon. The twenty twenty COVID emergency business grant qualification states you must maintain a business in Lamarck. He does not, nor did he maintain a business in Lamarck. The Galveston Daily News article from October twenty twenty-four regarding the address says this, Sarah Lowery is quoted as saying, "The address listed serves as our mailing address and does not reflect an operational business location." From the first, the Facebook post from February twenty twenty, where Six Brothers Concrete is now hiring, listed again, fourteen, fourteen, Highway six. The grant application signed by Joseph Lowery on May twenty-third, twenty twenty, and I think in April also, listing his residential mailing address in Lamarck as his operating business address. The grant application states, "The EDC reserves the right to recover any monies given to any applicant if it is later determined that any information provided was true, was not true, and correct." Six Brothers Concrete is also being sued for delinquent taxes by the College of the Mainland, Galveston County, several of them. Plus, he's also being taken to court for no certificate of occupancy, which is a legal requirement to run a business. I'm asking the council to make arrangements with Councilman Lowery to immediately start paying back the funds he received based on his fraudulent application and refer this matter to the DA, as it appears he is trying to avoid paying taxes by fraudulently attempting to use his Lamarck residential address as his business address. At the very least, an elected, elected representative that is charged with managing taxpayers' dollars should at the very minimum pay his taxes.
Thank you, Ms. McAfee. Ms. Ivy Strong? Welcome, Ms. Ivy. Name and address for the record, please.
Hello. My name is Ivy Strong. I'm a Lamarck resident at thirty-one, twenty-three Stee Roy. And I have a couple of bipartisan issues to address, something that I think will help not only just me, but other citizens that live in my area. I live on Stee Roy between Voce and Westward. And the first issue I'm going to address is the trash pickup. I have a neighbor directly next to me that has had a pile of tree limbs and one whole line of fence sitting in their yard for two months. About six weeks ago, it was tagged. Tag's gone, but the debris is still there. There was a large chair that sat out there for seven or eight weeks. Somebody took that, but there's still just a large pile of debris. This time of year, we have termites swarming, and they're attracted to the wood, so that's a concern, as well as other bugs. I also, there's also another house on the street. I don't know if there are rules with trash cans or anything like that, but they have multiple trash cans, they leave them on the street, leave them open with trash overflowing day after the trash pickup, and they just, they're never closed, they're never pulled in, and that attracts bugs and vermin. And the other issue that I want to address is recently, a lot of the streets in our areas have been being repaved, which is a great thing. In our little area, we have McKenny, and then we have Kenneth that cuts along the side, and Steve Roy butts in to Kenneth with Mar Ann here, and then it dead ends here. Down here at the end of Kenneth is our drainage. The way that our roads work is Steve Roy slopes down, Mar Ann slopes down onto this road, and it all slopes into these two little drainage things at the end of the road. Well, they've now repaved- Well, they've now repaved this, and it's higher than our streets. And they, when they repaved it, they didn't slope it down at the curves to allow the water to drain. So now it's all even, and water is just ponding. We had a very small amount of rain this morning. And at my intersection right there at Steve Roy, I have a huge puddle in front of my house, and then the house directly across the street from me, I have about a two-foot-wide section, and they do too, of water just standing, not draining. This is, the water never stands this long. We've had just a small amount of rain and a sunny day, and it's still just pooling there. My concern is if we get any significant amount of rain, I'm gonna have water coming into my yard and potentially my house because it's got no way, it's not being directed to those drains anymore. Even if they pave Steve Roy, they're going to pave it level, and they're not gonna be grading it down.
Yeah, yeah.
So that, that's a concern of mine because that becomes an expense.
Yeah, yeah, no, we got it. Ms. Ivy, let me ask you this. Just so that we're clear, you said there was a red tag on the debris?
Yeah.
And then the, now the red tag is gone, but the debris remains?
Correct.
Okay, very good. Ms. Pritchett, would you, while Ms. Ivy is here, have her visit with perhaps Mr. Bro and some others?
I will have one of our Public Works reach out to you while you're here.
While you're here.
As well as we'll coordinate with you later this week for us to have a site visit.
Yeah, absolutely. Get my phone numbers on my form. Y'all can come out. I have pictures on my phone that I can show whoever wants to see them now. It's, flooding is my main concern, although we do have flood insurance. It's a, there's a deductible and the hassle and the expense and
Yes, ma'am.
Hurricane season, I'm really concerned.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, all right. Mr. Richard Holcomb. Welcome, Richard. Name and address for the record, please. Look at this smile on your face, bud. It's good to see you again.
Speaker, Mayor, Council. I would like to come up here and talk about the Mayhem Boat Ramp. Me and my wife put it in my little boat there, and we go fishing all the time. It's some of the best fishing around here. It's real close to our house. But they, then the boat ramp did need to rebuild it. It was getting pretty bad. But it looks like they're complete except for the tables. But they still have a chain across the boat ramp. And I have this little small boat. It don't take a whole lot to get in that Highlands Bow. Like I say, right now during the, this time of the summer to late end of the summer, some of the best fishing around here. And we love to do, go fishing. Like I say, it's only, it's probably less than a mile from my house. And I'd appreciate it if they would remove that chain across the boat ramp and let us get to and I take my grand, what I like about is I can take my grandkids riding the bayou, and I don't have to worry about no high winds, no other pools and boats drinking and everything because that's a pretty, pretty slow ride on that Highlands Bow. And I just, I kinda didn't understand. As far as I know, they still close that park at dusk. And I didn't quite understand why they put those big light, solar-powered lights out there on a park that's closed at dusk.
Yeah.
And I just wish we could, we could get that open back up so I could, I could enjoy taking my grandkids down, down the bow.
Yes, sir.
And thank you, mayor.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Pritchett, do you have a point of information?
I do. Yes, sir. Mr. Holcomb, as a point of information, I know that that project looks to be done. It is not. The Public Works crew in the back and myself, when we visited that, there's a final punch list that we were not happy with because it doesn't meet the standards that it needs to. I will tell you that some of my fondest memories come from fishing with my father and my grandfather, so I understand your, your want for that to be completed, but we also have to think of safety and obviously the safety of any vessels entering and exiting that as well. And so when that is complete, we will invite you out as well as the rest of Lamarck to come out for a ribbon cutting, but we are all very excited about that. But we're almost there, but not quite yet. Thank you, sir.
Very good. Mr. Michael Adams. Welcome, Michael. Name and address for the record, please.
My, my name is Michael Adams. I live in Texas City, fourteen twenty-eight.
Welcome.
Twenty-third Avenue. Good evening, council members. I, I'm here to speak on behalf of Seventeen Twenty-Seven Main Street LLC. I'm just here just to give a little background for the council about what's going on out there. Seventeen Twenty-Seven bought the property at Seventeen Twenty-Seven Main Street back in December of twenty twenty-three. It started renovating, so those apartments that are right there on Main Street. It'll be a sixty-four unit complex. They've torn it down to the studs, as I understand it, and they put, they've put a substantial amount of money into it. They bought it for two million dollars. It's currently on the tax rolls for four point nine. They've gotten appraisal for five, so that looks like it to be pretty accurate. So they put quite a bit of money into it. There's been, in April, the Building Commission gave a laundry list of things they wanted done to the property. Like new fencing, clean it up, get some landscaping done, some other things. The, the owners put in eighty thousand dollars to do all that. They put up the new fencing, they cleaned it up, they put the new landscaping in. But they ordered a demolition of the property, which caused, as you can tell, a little bit of concern for, for my clients. They need about six months or so to get, to get finished. We understand the frustration of council, the Building Commission, and city to get this done. They've had a few bumps, not many, but you know, they had a barrel. So we understand the frustration, and they're frustrated as well because they, they want to complete this project and open up sixty-four new apartment homes for people to live in. They need to get a building permit. They haven't just been, their building permit expired in May, and they haven't been able to get a new one, and they're still trying to get that done. Then they can get moving with getting contractors lined up. They can't get any contractors out of permit, obviously. They're HVAC, they're plumbers, and they're electric. You know, as I said, it will provide sixty-four units, increase the tax base, and improve, improve the local Main Street. And, and so we believe that this is a win-win for the city, the commission, my clients. We, we want to cooperate with the city and the Building Commission. We'd like to work a peaceful solution out to this and, and work with, with everybody that we need to work with and move forward to get this project completed. We believe it's in everybody's best interest and look forward to working with the city and the Building Commission on this. As a matter of fact, you know, Mr. Keneble has already introduced me to Mr. Pennington, so I think we can start, already start getting the wheels turning on this. But again, we look forward to working with everybody. I just wanted to give you all a heads up, a background about what was going on. Introduce myself as a local contact for Seventeen Twenty-Seven Main Street in case anybody needs anything. I'm with the Doyle Law Firm in Galveston.
Very good.
Okay, but thank you guys for your time and attention. I appreciate it very much. Take care and have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Michael? Yeah, I think, is that your card, Gus?
That's mine. That's Joseph's card.
Okay, all right. Thank you, sir. I think that I am saying, and if I'm not, forgive me, Holly Cooper? Anybody by the last name of Cooper? Mr. Pritchett, there, there is a long response, so perhaps you might be able to glean from that response what the concerns were from, from that resident. Thank you. Mrs. Haley Winkleman. Welcome, Ms. Haley. Name and address for the record, please.
On Bowie Street in District C. Gonna talk real fast because I have a five-minute speech, and we're gonna get through in three minutes. Hey, council neighbors, I have a few announcements this evening. First, I would like to announce to District C that drainage relief is coming. They heard my pleas, or tickets, or emails, or whatever we want to call it. They met with me, Mr. Bro, the supervisor, the stormwater foreman, met with me at J.C. Park. After the last council meeting, we walked the neighborhood together. They did recognize the issues, and it is on the calendar to be done as soon as the equipment comes available. So hopefully as soon as that Westward project gets done. They did say about four or five weeks, but you know, things are changed. And I have also filed a petition for recall for Councilman Lowry. I'd like to take a moment to share why arguably the most important role of a council member is to advocate for the concerns of their district. There are other aspects to the job. But advocating for citizens is the main one. The portion of the meeting where council members address citizens' concerns on the record is the very last part of the meeting before it is adjourned. Joseph has left at least four meetings in the past twelve months with no excuser official waiver. During these meetings, no citizen concerns for our district were entered onto the record, even though we spoke about them at the council meeting because he was not here to do it. We should all hold our elected officials to a minimum standard of showing up, staying in the duration, and trying their best to do their job. Y'all said y'all wanted it. Since I announced this petition, I have been harassed, slandered, defamed by Joseph in all an attempt to bully me into silence. I've been called stupid, a brain-dead idiot, a liar, a fraudster, said I don't know the structure of city government. I have been accused of polluting with people I literally do not know. I have been told I have no ethics and morals. I have I have been told that you can do and say whatever you want to me. That is not the case. That is not. You even sent an abusive cookie cake to our city staff after I filed the documents with the city. And you think it's acceptable to criticize people's bodies? We are better than this, Lamarck. The maximum effective range of an excuse is zero on any of this. He has done nothing but create chaos in a toxic work environment and shown his true character since I started this recall. We deserve better. District C deserves better. The time is now to stand up against this chaos and toxicity and do something because we need to hold ourselves to some standards here. Oh, and Lorraine, I have to find the Facebook.
Miss, thank, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Winkleman. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. One more time, Mr. Avery, in case someone perhaps was, was forgotten online. Anyone online? Do you see anyone? Very good. Thank you. That concludes our citizens' participation and moves us down to presentations. Brian Friedman is looking like, what in the world is happening here? But it's okay, Brian. You may come. Bay Area, Houston, five-two Bay Area, Houston Economic Partnership update. And this is Mr. Brian Friedman. Welcome, Brian.
Mayor, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Great to see you. Great to see members of council. Appreciate the time. I'll make sure everybody can hear. But honored to be here and love being down in Lamarck and spending time with friends and seeing all the great stuff going on. Hey, I, Councilmember Yancy, thank you for the invitation to come give a quick update on what's going on with Bay Area, Houston, and some of the partnership things we're working together with, between the city and BayHEP, and some broader things that we have going on. And so I have just a few charts, but wanted to talk a little bit about who we are and what we do for folks who aren't familiar with the organization. A little bit about the partnership and some of the projects we're working with Lamarck and the, the EDC. And then a little bit about our recent DC trip that we were honored to have Councilmember Yancy with us and some of the broader work that we do across the region. So with that, Kara, I don't know if you can help me with charts, but we'll go to the next one. Oh, thank you over there. So BayHEP is a five oh one C six, so we're a business consortium, not-for-profit organization. We've been around for forty-nine years. We have a little bit over three hundred active members, including nineteen municipal members, including the great city of Lamarck, and so appreciate that support and partnership. Our formal agreement is with the EDC, but we really feel like we work with the city and the EDC and with developers and brokers and business owners across the city. We, we have nineteen municipalities, both Harrison, Galveston County are members, the Port of Houston, the Houston Airport system. We really try to think about it as how do you bring leaders in industry, academia, nonprofit, and government to the table to focus on regional needs and interests? And so really excited to do that and work with many of you on those projects. Next chart. So I keep this chart in any update I give, and this is really if you're talking to someone who is not from this region and has never been to the broader Bay Area, Houston region, it's how do you think about the regional economy in this area? So if you think about the Parthenon, right, you have this big stately roof. We put our big, our five big industry clusters in the region. I don't think any of these will come as a surprise, and a lot of us are employed in these ecosystems, but maritime, aerospace and aviation, tourism and recreation, healthcare, specialty petrochemical, all the energy industry are the multi-billion, tens of billions of dollar industries that are economic drivers for this, or economic engines for this region, driving the regional economy. And then for each one of those big drivers, there are the support infrastructure units, government services and small businesses, contractors, real estate agents, lawyers, dry cleaners and restaurants, everything that is that goes in, and each one of those have their own ecosystems. And then foundationally, education, workforce development, how do we have a workforce that can support that business community, create jobs and prosperity and tax base that benefits us all? And so we really try to work together of, hey, how do we as a region work as partners to identify key projects and go, go pursue them? Okay? This chart I'll leave in here, and you'll have a copy of these charts, but this, you know, we have a great story to tell in this region. It's affordable. We have a great workforce. We're central to the country. We have a lot of amenities that folks seek, and we have all those drivers. So we have momentum and scale that a lot of other communities can't offer. Most regions and many communities would do just about anything for one of those big drivers, and we have five, right? We are fortunate to have that as an ecosystem, but the value proposition of selling this region is a good one. I'm more proud to be able to do that. Okay? We focus, many of y'all have probably seen Barbara Cutzinger's hot projects, but we focus on a number of Lamarck projects that we have going on. We'll leave this a copy of you, and the next chart I have has the QR code in case anybody wants to pull it up. This has a deep dive into all the projects that are going on across the region at kind of a bite-sized level, and so you can take a look at those as your schedule allows, but we're fortunate to work with Alex on a number of those. The Texan, the Dataprana project, the Greyhound Park project, the new Lamarck High School are the ones that are up there. This font's a little bit too small. And so a lot of good stuff going on in and around Lamarck. And for those who are interested or want to see that, we make that available on our website, barbaryhouston.com. We update it every few weeks. Barbara Cutzinger, who many of you know, who does a lot of our product developments and projects, keeps that updated for us. And so JB and many of the other folks, Alex, get calls all the time going, you know, what's new, what's going on? Make sure we capture that. And then that we distribute to a network of about a thousand brokers and developers. And so as they're looking at projects in the region that can really understand what's going on in this area. Okay? Hey, so I asked our team to sort of what were some of the big things that we've been working on with, with the city or the EDC. A number of you attended the ICSC, which is International Conference on Shopping Centers, earlier this year, and so thanks for joining us for that. We go as a community or as a region to help port these developers to come in and take a look at this region. We've been working with Alex on the University of Houston land, just by the dog track. I, by coincidence, when I first took this job, I had a long discussion with Alex about that. And I've worked with the University of Houston Systems Government Relations Director for a number of years, and so we brought him down and had Alex come out and a number of leaders from the city to talk about how we might pursue developing that opportunity while still pursuing UH's goals and look for a win-win. And Alex has had a number of conversations with them about joint efforts to bring them projects that might be critical. And so we're still working it, but much more optimistic about the probability of stuff happening there. Maritime industrial base and broader manufacturing projects are ones that are high on our list. Councilmember Ross, I know you were a Navy veteran. Thank you for your service. We've been spending quite a bit of time with the US Navy trying to get them to invest in maritime manufacturing projects in, across Galveston County, and really get Galveston County suppliers to bid for Navy projects. You're probably well aware of the shortfall in maritime manufacturing in vessels. The president highlighted it in his remarks during the joint address to Congress. It's prioritized in his budget, and so we're looking to land some of those projects here. There are a couple of them. Unfortunately, we're under NDA, but would be game changers for the region. Require gigantic supply chain base if we're to land there, so we'll see. Let's see, we've been getting the Galveston County Economic Development Leaders together. Every other month, we actually are meeting on Thursday, but Alex and many others, or the other cities Economic Development Quarters, we host them for lunch every other month to help make sure that all those partners are working together. And then the Austin and Washington DC trips, we joined Galveston County Day. Got to spend some time with several of you for that. And then our Washington DC trip that I'll talk about briefly in the next chart. I'll also mention one other thing that I didn't get to add up there, but Alex reminded me when I talked to him. We also were honored to host, the EDC has a partnership with the Houston Business Journal to really focus on Lamarck in the region. And we hosted a, a roundtable that the Houston Business Journal did. We had, we were honored to host that at Bay Area, Houston, and helped them identify the key regional leaders to be a part of that, and they did a huge feature on us. And then of course, or not on us, on that group and Lamarck's involvement in being a regional leader, and so was thrilled about that. And so was thrilled about that. Okay. So we just got back from our Washington DC trip about two weeks ago. For those who hadn't heard, the budget for NASA had a pretty significant proposed reduction, about twenty four percent. NASA's workforce, about half of it lives in Galveston County. And so many of you know neighbors that work for NASA or one of their contractors, were very concerned about that. We've been going to Washington DC every year for thirty three years to talk about the importance of federal investment. That's one of the largest direct investments in the region of federal dollars. And so we brought eighty eight travelers from across the country, the largest share from the Houston region. But we had two hundred and eighty congressional office visits while we were in DC. We have a number of pictures and of course, Councilwoman Nancy, we're honored to have you to be able to join us for that, along with a number of other regional leaders. And it's a mix of aerospace industry executives, community leaders, often city council folks who can talk about the impact in their community. And then we bring students that are pursuing a career in aerospace to really put a face to the future employees that'll be participating in that endeavor. And that's really part of our region's identity in addition to all the other things. And so we're honored to do that, representing twenty four states. Next chart, I think my last chart. Hey, so there's just a bunch of folks up here, but we are involved in an incredible amount of things. And and so I took some pictures of that. We have just about every month, we have a general membership meeting where we bring down state level and national level key speakers and host them. Of which members of council are invited to any of those. If you're not getting those on distribution, let me know and we'll add you. We have sixteen committees now, all the big industry clusters. We have a tourism committee. We have a public safety committee. And so we really take strategy in these discussions and turn them into action. And what are we doing to help carry the ball on whatever field we happen to be playing on? And so with just some snapshots of some of those things that we have doing on there, I'll step up the capital, hosting international delegations of which we host about twenty a year to get to look at foreign investment in this region. That's a lot of stuff. The best way to understand what we do is to come join us and be part of that. And we welcome anybody's engagement with that as you have bandwidth. Mayor Bell, thanks for all your involvement, JB. Always great working with you, sir. And really my appreciation to Alex, who's been a great partner and is a leader amongst his peers in the economic development community. I think that is it. Happy to answer any questions. Also happy to get off stage quickly.
Thank you, Brian. Any, any questions for Bay Hep at this time? Yeah, but we, we can't, we, ma'am, 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 I, I know, but we, we can't let that be a part of this meeting. He's going to sit down, I assume, and you might be able to ask him. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I'd be happy to, happy to visit with their address or question.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you all for what you do. Appreciate the opportunity.
Five, three, Grant Works. Welcome.
Good evening, councilmembers and everybody.
Alex, will you just make sure to talk into the mic?
Yeah, yeah. Can you hear me? Okay. How's that check? Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Welcome. Thank you for having me. I'm here to give a quick little presentation around the Section Three requirements for the Wisteria TDA project. I do have some slides, so I'm hoping that we can get those hooked up in just a second here so I can share those. I regret to inform you that my slides are not nearly as interesting as the last ones, but it is a requirement of this project. So bear with me and I'll get it over as quick as I can. We have slides. I do have them pulled up on my laptop if you need a hot swap or something. Thank you. Sorry for the font. It does get better. This is a template form that we have to use. So as I mentioned, this is the A ten twenty four Section Three Presentation to Local Community, you all. So as, as I hope you all know, and as a reminder, the city of Lamar was recently, has recently received the following grant award. Contract number CDV twenty three dash zero three two seven for the grant award amount of five hundred thousand dollars. The project is to install approximately one thousand six hundred fifteen linear feet of twenty four inch culvert, twenty four inch concrete grade inlets, related driveway repairs and all associated appurtenances along Wisteria Drive from Ross Avenue to Winding Way. The project's colloquially known as the Wisteria Drainage Project. The grant is funded through the Community Development Block Grant via the US Department of Housing and Urban Development and the Texas Department of Agriculture. As a condition of funding, the city of Lamarck must comply with Section Three of the Housing and Urban Development Act of nineteen sixty eight. To the greatest extent feasible, grant recipients, that's us or you all, must direct economic opportunities generated by CDBG funds to low and very low income persons. In part, this means ensuring that Section Three businesses have the information to submit a bid or proposal for the project and Section Three workers have information about any available job opportunities related to the project. For precise definitions, please see Texas CDBG Policy Issuance twenty dash zero one. I will have a link to that in the presentation. A company may qualify as a Section Three business if it is owned by low income persons. It is owned by Section Eight Assistant Housing Residents or seventy five percent of all labor hours for the business in a three-month period are performed by Section Three workers. Businesses and individuals can register at HUD's Section Three website, the link provided there, as well as the Houston Minority Supplier Development Council, additional link there. This project is expected to include the following contracting opportunities. Grant Administration Services, previously selected as Grant Works Inc., that is me. Engineering Services, previously selected as LJA. And the prime contractor, very recently previously selected as Markon. This project has kicked off. Markon is also, I'm pleased, well, just excited to report, they are a Section Three business. You may qualify as a Section Three worker if your annual income is below the country threshold for your family size. You are a current or recent youth build participant. So I should have said or and. Register your information and search for opportunities at workintexas.gov. HUD's Section Three Opportunity Portal, link provided. Section work, section three workers that reside near the project location may also qualify as targeted Section Three workers for this project. That service area is defined by this map. The city of Lamar will track all hours worked on the project based on the three categories of workers. This will require collection of certain income information, but do not worry. Labor specialists at Grant Works are handling that for you in conjunction with the engineers at LJA as well as working directly with a contractor and their staff. One more. And so we have some additional information and links here. As I mentioned, we have the Texas CDBG Policy Issuance twenty dash zero one. Link is provided there. Twenty four CFR Part seventy five, link, linked, link provided there as well. Mayor Bell, you are one of the contacts on the application, but I imagine that if people have additional questions, they'll most likely come to me as well. Alex Severs, the Labor Standards Officer on this project. So that's it. Sorry, it was very boring, but again, we had to get through these. And if you have any questions, I will, can be reached by email.
Very good. Anyone have any questions for Grant Works on this presentation?
I do have some questions.
Sure. Miss Hanson.
The five hundred thousand dollar grant is for what?
This is for the Wisteria Drainage Program Drainage Project. It is. You applied for it. I want to say twenty one or twenty two. It was awarded in February, not this recent one, but the past February of twenty four. I have been on the project since the beginning and we are just getting into the construction phase as of the NTP date, which was the it was May nineteenth.
Right. So when you're talking about Section Three.
Yes.
Section Three basically says that you're going to hire local people.
Yes.
To work on this particular job.
Yes.
So you, so when local people would like to apply for that implementation, who gives out the notice that, hey, we're taking applications to work on this project? Does it go to TWC? I mean, who announces that?
That's, that's a great question. A lot of the Section Three outreach for this project has been completed as most of the major vendors have been selected. This was the opportunity I got to come out here for this presentation, but we have been doing that all along. There are specific requirements on every application, every end, our request for proposals or request for qualifications in the bidding process. I, part of my job is to make sure that those steps are done. We go through direct solicitation that we search. I use the tools that I've linked in this presentation to go through, pick vendors that are appropriate and close, directly facilitate an outreach. Every single bid proposal or request for qualifications or notice or a request for proposals for the grant piece of it, go through the paper. And so everyone has the opportunity to see those out available. So on top of direct outreach of both, I guess the best example for the actual construction elements for the bidding, the engineer will also know people, but we make sure in like that Section Three map, we targeted businesses in that area. And we also work with the contractor to make sure if they are available, if all feasible, that they are recruiting and selecting individuals that are Section Three workers. And as I mentioned, the business or the contractor that was selected, Markon, is a Section Three business concern. So, yeah, we are, it seems like it's working.
Okay, because what happened in the, in the past is a lot of people locally.
Yes.
Don't find out about until it's too late. So JB, I would like to have a report from Grant Works on if they sent this to the principals of, because we serve five different high schools, for example, in our city.
Sure.
So we want to make sure that those young people that are recent graduates from our high schools and our local community colleges have information, because a lot of people don't understand about Section Three.
Right.
And Section Three is a very important component. And it takes local officials to stand up to let the contractors know, hey, we have these amount of young adults or people that would love to apply for this program. A lot of times they use people they know. And we want to make sure that it's fair and that the city, we have noticed. So I would like a report on where they have, where the contractors have solicited for Section Three workers.
I will work with JB and get you the information available for that. I promise you that this is a part of the process that we are both obligated to enforce by the conditions of the grant. And I think ethically obligated as well to, we take very seriously at Grant Works. And since we're sort of at the control center seat of that process, we can see it all. And that to the best of my knowledge, as the project manager for this, everything has been done cohesively, coherently and legally.
And if, and if we could get a list of who's chosen. We want to make sure that our local students and people have an opportunity that actually live here.
I will coordinate and we'll see what we can do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alex, I think Mayor Protem has a few questions for you.
Sorry, I didn't mean to run off.
No, you're fine. You're fine.
To add on to Councilperson Nancy, you, if you've said that this project has already been bid out, you've got your contractors. So I would have been expecting on this presentation since it would be very well where Section Three, you put it together after I and, and had government abide by the Section Three rules. You need to have reports presented to us monthly as to the number of applicants and the number of individuals that were hired that meet these qualifications. And there's outreach material that you should have had available to us to see, to present, announcing as to, to Councilperson Nancy's point, announcing the information and disseminating the information. But at this point, from where I, of your presentation, most importantly, there are reports that should have been filed. And those I would like to see.
Sure. We have all those reports available and I will get them too.
Very good. Anything else from anyone else? Thank you, Alex.
Yeah, thank you.
Pleasure to see you again. Five, four, Open Gov Software Implementation Status Update. Hello, Miss Turner. Good to see you today.
Thank you. Oh, it's warmer up here than it is.
I'm trying to listen. Hey. Welcome.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council and the residents of the city of Lamarck. I'm Christine Turner, Finance Director for the City of Lamarck. And I wanted to come before you today to provide a status update on the software implementation. I felt that this was very important to do this because we have, we're spending several hundreds of thousands of dollars for this project. So I thought it was only befitting to come before you and have a transparent report about where we are currently. I have the privilege of overseeing the utility billing and finance teams. We have already spent several hours outside of our regular duties to work on the software implementation. So I do want to thank them for their time and being able to pivot from their regular duties and to work on this implementation. So I thank them. The Open Gov team has been superb for us. We meet weekly. Some of the individuals on that team's names are Pranchas Fitzpatrick, Craig White and Danielle Vidal. On the line now, we have Pranchas Fitzpatrick, who can give us an update or I want them to give us an update of where we are and how we have been doing with this finance implementation. Pranchas, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, you can go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers and the rest of the constituents there. My name is Pranchas Fitzpatrick and I serve as the Implementation Consultant with Open Gov. I've had the privilege of partnering with your finance administering teams over the last several months, supporting implementation of Open Gov financials. A modern cloud-based ERP platform designed specifically for the needs of local governments. My role is to guide your staff through the transition from the legacy system, STW, into a modern, integrated and transparent environment. This, this will include everything from your system configuration and data migration to processing training and long-term strategy alignment. It's been a real privilege to work with the city of Lamarck's staff. What makes most of the commitment is to improve the day-to-day. They're not there just to check boxes, but actively looking for ways to streamline workflows, reduce bottlenecks and deliver better service to internal and external stakeholders. Their proactive mindset has been a huge asset to the project. And I broke it down into a few different steps. Part one, implement overview, past and present. The project officially kicked off in late February twenty twenty five, starting with planning sessions and a complete chart of account redesign. The foundation step allowing us to meaningfully report and accountability groups forward. Since then, we've developed, tested a data migration plan that preserves the historical accuracy while mapping cleanly the new COA structure. Conducting multiple discovery workshops, which they have been very patient with us because we've asked a lot of questions, where we captured out each department's actual works so we can design a system that reflects real-world processes. Completed in the integration configuration or view of key modules, we talked about the general ledger, accounts payable and requisitions, cash receipts, utility billing and bank reconciliation. We are now going to test We are now in the testing and validation phase. Many of the components are already live in a controlled setting and you will, your team will provide direct feedback to fine-tune before we fully roll out. Um what's ahead? Looking ahead, our target go-live window will be the late summer, early fall. So we're talking about Sep- uh September at this point, pending successful testing and a final approval. Every step of this, we do have approval process that Christine and her teams go through. Prior to launching, we will enter a brief blackout period, which is consists of five days to protect data and ac- uh accuracy. While the transition, after that, we will do a hyper adoption, which is four weeks of meeting daily and forming a support phase where they guide your team to real-world usage, troubleshooting, and optimizing the software. The city of Lamarck is making this a serious investment in modernizing financial infrastructure. Your staff has shown clear ownership on momentum and it's been a pleasure to help and support to build something sustainable, scalable, and smart for years to come. And I want to thank Christina and her team especially. We wouldn't be at this point, and I have did this upgrades many times for a lot of cities in the state of Texas. And because we're where we're at today is because of their dedication to the project. Do you have any questions for me at this time?
Well, welcome, Mr. Fitz- Fitzpatrick.
Thank you.
And thank you for your presentation, Ms. Turner. Thank you for being here. Thank you for your portion of the presentation. Council, do we have any questions for Ms. Turner or Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Uh you said that it was gonna be done at, at what particular time? It'll be the the first phase of the rollout?
The first phase of the rollout. Um when is our first phase supposed to be done?
Uh the first, the first phase of going live at the financials is supposed to be dedicated done by the last week of September.
Are you doing multiple departments simultaneously?
So my functionality is to work with the accounting department, but the requisition module will be done for all departments that offer to make purchasing for your, for the city itself. So that will be.
We on track for the percentages as it currently stands.
Yes.
Are there any things that in your purview that think that we will hit any speed bumps as it currently stands?
Well, I will tell you this. I will be at inside the office there in two weeks. And then I will be able to give you a more dedicated answer on that time. I'm gonna be there from Tuesday through Thursday with on training in person for the admin groups within there and then we'll know what speed bumps will have, but I don't see any at this point.
Is there anything that would hold up our data migration to already be complete?
No, not at this point, because right now we did the first roll of that data and um I am sixty percent through the data already and I have not seen any issues with the data.
Other than the system walkthrough and the security workshops, are there anything that we need to put on our uh agenda for the near future?
For this point, there is not anything for the near future. Um I will visit again in September after go-live and be there for three more days to make sure the staff is well-trained and will meet all those requirements they need to. I do not see any issues at that point.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Oh, you're very welcome. Thank you for asking the questions.
Very good. If there's nothing further, uh thank you, Ms. Turner again, and thank you, Mr. Fitzpatrick again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are past our presentation, so the rest of this meeting should go fairly quickly. I believe we've studied really hard. We've done our homework. So it's all, all that's left is a few comments and a few votes. Gus, if if you don't mind, I'm gonna take six altogether. Is that okay? Minutes, six, one, special uh city council minutes, five, twelve, twenty uh twenty twenty-five. Six, two, regular city council minutes, three, ten, twenty twenty-five. Six, three, special city council minute, minutes, nine, three, twenty twenty-four. Uh six, four, regular city council meetings, four, twenty-two, twenty-four. Uh six, five, regular city council minutes, three, twenty-five, twenty-four. I will entertain a motion. Is there a second? Are there any omissions or corrections? Hearing none, we will call for the vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Item seven, public hearings. Conduct public hearing to hear public input on seven, one, ordinance number letter O dash two zero two five dash zero zero one two. Establishing a special events committee, providing an effective date and making other provisions related to the subject. Uh the regular scheduled meeting uh will close now at seven oh five. The public hearing will open at seven oh five. Are there any persons online wishing to speak to item seven, one? Are there any persons online wishing to speak to item seven? One. Move now to those that are here uh physically with us in person. Are there any persons uh in this room uh wishing to speak to item seven, one? One more time, any persons here with us today uh wish to speak to item seven, one? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing at seven oh six, reopen our regularly scheduled meeting at seven oh six, and move to item eight, old business. Items presented to council for discussion and possible action, eight, one, ordinance number letter O dash two zero two five dash zero zero one two. Establishing a special events committee, providing an effective date, making other provisions related to the subject. I will, this is the second and final reading. I will entertain a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Let the record reflect that Mr. Ross was uh not able to vote on item eight, one, eight, two. Uh boards and commissions, uh appointments, appointing, reappointing, and are removing members of boards, commissions, and committees. City clerk, before we get into any possible appointments, are there any uh note, items of note that you'd like to share with us before we start?
Um yes, I believe it is in the documentation, but um we did have a board member resign over the last week. Um that is, I'm just making sure it's in here, sorry.
Who, who was it now?
Uh Ms. Maggie Manuel resigned over the um effective uh June first.
And she was on the building standards? And which council district uh was she appointed by?
That is a District C appointment.
District C appointment. Very good. Any other items to note?
Um none from me at the moment. We are uh beginning to receive applications for uh the youth advisory committee, so you will be seeing those.
Sure. Youth advisory?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Council, do we have any appointments that we'd like uh uh to consider tonight? District A, any appointments?
No, no.
B. C, I'm so, B, that was you.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was thinking about James and with you all along.
I would like to.
Hold on, James. Hold on.
Put the pitch out for this Terry Taylor, somebody put her on. So I have four, we have four numbers on this. Please.
James, you, you're talking out of turn, James. We, we, we gotta, we gotta move from you and go to Ms. Laura. Do you have anything, Ms. Laura?
Uh Mr. Robert Mitchich for ordinance review board.
We have a issue with that.
He's already on a on a board. You can only be on one. Uh you'll be an alternate, but you can't be on two.
Now, when he continued, when he finishes his service on the Public Safety Committee, yes? Then he could reappoint, he can appoint him to the.
Absolutely.
So you could do that, Ms. Laura, if you like.
Okay.
You good with that? Any other appointments?
Sure.
All right. Now we're, now we're at you, James. Look at that. Now you don't have any. I'm teasing. All right, guys. There are no appointments. Let's move past eight, two. Thank you, council. Thank you, uh Ms. Nance. Item nine, new business. Items presented to council for discussion and possible action, nine, one, resolution letter R dash two zero two five dash zero zero two nine. Authorizing certain officers of the city to sign and endorse checks and draft, and drafts of the city of Lamarck bank accounts. Finance, uh Mr. Pritchett, Ms. Turner, uh Ms. Nance, does not matter. We would certainly just like to hear names, our positions. Doesn't matter to me. Just put them on the record so that we uh we all can know who these folks are and uh what capacity.
We'll let Ms. Turner do that.
Thank you for that, Mr. Pritchett.
It is housekeeping, but.
So the city manager will be able to sign on bank accounts and investment accounts? Um else do we need to do that?
City manager, finance director, city clerk.
Myself, quite naturally. I didn't think about myself, but yes, myself. And that's it, just the two of us.
And Ms. Nance.
That's right. You do sign checks. I am so sorry. It's.
Okay.
Here and there, she does have the ability to sign on our accounts as well.
Very good.
Here and there, Christine Turner.
The, the.
Joshua Pritchett.
The finance director, the city manager, and the city clerk.
Yes, let me start over. Christine Turner, finance director, Joshua Pritchett, city manager, here and that, city clerk.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
So.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Item nine, two, resolution number, let, resolution letter R dash two zero two five dash zero zero three zero, authorizing certain officers of the city as authorized representatives to administer and manage the city's investment accounts. So we are going to get that on the record for our community as well. Who would these persons be and what capacity do they serve?
City manager, Josh- Joshua Pritchett. I wonder why I want to keep calling you Joseph. But Joshua Pritchett, city manager, Christine Turner, finance director.
Is that it?
And here and there, city clerk.
All right. No, nobody else.
That's it.
Very good. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion. Is there a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Item nine, three, public safety building approving the public safety uh building conceptual design proposal from project uh Lung in the amount of forty thousand dollars. Ms. Nance.
Yeah, I can take this one. I don't believe anybody from that committee is the chairman for that committee is here right now. Um you are asked for them to expedite the process. Um this is the next step, having the architects come in. Um I've been in contact with them. They have um agreed to an expedited timeline for two locations, uh location one and location two. I'm not for reasons going to say the locations on the record at the moment. Um but they have agreed, um they are asking uh to come in next month and give a presentation for their findings, but they do believe that they will be able to have this done in time for a November election. We just need to get the contract signed so we can get them going.
Very good. Any questions for Ms. Nance?
For clarity, the presentation is to the the safety committee or it's to the both of us?
To the one for next month. It would be, that would be the presentation for council. They will meet with the public safety committee separately.
Very good. Any further questions? I'll entertain a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, council. Nine, four, Texas Health Benefits Pool, approving city manager to sign the renewal notice and benefit verification form for the fiscal year twenty-six benefit year. Uh I believe this is standard. I don't see uh.
Ms. Hallbrook is online.
She's online. Ms. Hallbrook, did you want to read us into this?
Um yes, sir. So this is uh just an annual renewal. Uh thankfully, uh with the benefits pool, you know, power of the pool, they have um only increased two percent this year. Um some organizations are looking at up to an eleven percent increase, so that's actually very good news. Um and so we wanted to go ahead and get this um signed so that we could get it over to Ms. Turner in uh preparation for the budget season.
Very good. Any questions for Ms. Hallbrook? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Is there a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Item nine, five, Economic Development Corporation. Requesting a workshop between the Lamarck City Council and the Lamarck Economic Development Corporation. I ask for this item to be put on the agenda. There are several times throughout the year that we meet with the Economic Development Corporation in an executive session. Uh and usually we are speaking of property and contracts and things of that nature. Uh but uh at least once a year, uh we try to have a joint workshop in public, uh so that uh not only can council engage the Economic Development Corporation, but the Economic Development Corporation can engage council in a frank discussion or series of discussions uh so that the public can see, understand, know, and input from those discussions, right? Uh and so what we are looking for now, we're not looking for any agenda topics. Uh we can add those uh to Mrs. Uh Nance in the future. What we are looking for right now is a date. Is that right, Ms. Nance? We're looking for a date for a workshop. So council, let's get our calendars out. Perhaps let's get uh two or three dates. Is that right? Am I still doing good?
Yeah, I was gonna ask for multiple dates.
See, there it is. Great minds. Two or three dates so that we can then engage the Economic Development Corporation, who will uh hopefully uh respond to one of those dates. Council, do we have preferences? Do we want a weekday afternoon workshop? Do we want one before a council meeting? I know we're all chomping at the bit. I'm holding you back. Yes, sir.
For sometime this month? Possibly be one of the day.
Sure, sure. Anything, anything this month, uh I would say maybe first week or two in July. Uh anything within the next thirty to uh forty-five days, I would say.
For a council meeting, words better for me.
Before a council meeting, let's look at the next council meeting is what day? Does anybody have a problem offering the twenty-third as one day? Yes or no? Twenty-third, one day. Uh what is the next council meeting after that?
The fourteenth.
Of July?
Yes.
Let's offer the twenty-third without objection and the fourteenth of July, let's offer a start time at one PM.
I'll be out of town.
Fourteenth. Okay, well, let's do the twenty-third and then the next one after that would be the twenty-eighth of July. Let's do the twenty-third of June and the twenty-eighth of July. Uh let's do a one PM start time, council chambers. If any of us when I say us, I mean A, B, C, or D, have anything that we would like to see on the agenda, these exact same format applies. You would need a friend who happens to be an elected council member on this council uh to second your motion for items on the agenda. Um also, Ms. Nance, uh I would need uh or Mr. Pritchett, it doesn't matter. We would need any agenda items that the Economic Development Corporation would like to place on the agenda from their side. Uh because then it would uh lead me to or Mr. Pritchett uh by charter uh to add those agenda items so that that their side uh and their concerns of their questions could be addressed as well. Very good?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
For clarity, you, you also said agenda items and executive session items.
Um I'm, if I say that, let's be clear, agenda items. I don't, did I say executive session?
Or earlier when you were talking about.
Oh, I said, I said normally when we meet with the economic development, it's in the executive session, so people can't know what we, they don't know what we are actually discussing. At least once a year, we do a joint public. Yeah, so that people can hear and see uh and know what, what those relationships are. Did you? Okay, very good. Let's move right on past that one now. Thank you, council. We've given two dates. Is that good enough, Ms. Nance? Very good. Let's now move to street plan. Nine, six. Street plan, scheduling a workshop between the city council, city engineers, and public works department. I also put this on the agenda because it has already, uh the uh, the May election has already passed. The county's bond election for street repair and maintenance passed. Uh I believe uh we are receiving uh uh benefits from that bond election. I'm going to ask uh Mr. Pritchett to name, do you still remember the streets? You have them listed? I'm gonna ask him to to name the streets first and foremost that will be uh addressed with the county bond. Secondly, that leaves a whole lot of streets for us to consider how we would go about repairing, rebuilding those streets, millions of dollars. And so the council, after we see what the county has done, we need to begin uh doing the work of trying to provide resource for uh the rest of our street maintenance issues. And so we don't know what that will look like as a council. We know that it will be millions of dollars. We need to talk about that in an open council public session. Thirdly, we have equipment, we have human resources, and we have about one point five million dollars uh in street maintenance and the street maintenance budget for this year. We need to really think through uh and 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 direct our staff. On what our annual street maintenance activities are going to look like. Three things, number one, what's the county doing? Number two, no matter what they do, there are a whole lot of streets that are costing millions of dollars that need immediate attention, how do we pay for it? And number three, once we get these things established, what will our normal annual street maintenance operation look like? How much monies will we dedicate per year, how many staff members will we dedicate, how many pieces of equipment, how will we prioritize cities? So we're gonna have to roll our sleeves up, focus on. Our street maintenance issues, uh, and come up with some viable solutions, uh, and that, uh, is going to take more than a meeting. That's going to take a workshop. What I would propose, uh, is that whatever date the E D C does not choose. That we would choose that date for, uh, our street. Maintenance. Uh, workshop, without objection, council. Has to be done, Mr. Pritchett, did you wanna, did you have him?
I did, yes, sir.
So these are the streets that the county will, uh, will mitigate because of the bond election, go.
Yes, sir, so it comes in two parts for council and the general public, the. First part is going to be the pavement overlay of the streets, it is important to note that the total amount that we are allotted. Allowed from that bond is one million twenty-eight thousand and sixty dollars. The second of which is a mobility project on top of these streets, uh, with a certain amount of one million seven hundred and seventy-one thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. The streets that we are planning to do with the county road. Bond project are as follows, Moss Street, Rosewood Street, Meadow Lane, Norman Street. Acres Street, Azalea Courts, Nan Lee Street, Corbett Street, Bellevue Street, Fleming Street. Those come from our study that we have done in the city of Lamarck, ranking our streets from standard to very poor. Uh, the second half of that is the mobility project, the one point seven million. What that aspect of this is, is a mobility project for a major thoroughfare in the city of Lamarck. That is to encompass as many residents as it possibly can. Many of you know, and those of you who don't know, a good chunk of our, uh, city thoroughfares are actually text dot roads, which would include seventeen sixty-four. That would include also two double oh four, that would also include five nineteen, highway three. And so our mobility project of the street that we own for the city of Lamarck will be Lake Road. Starting at Texas Avenue seventeen sixty-four, moving as far as we possibly can towards forty-five, that one point seven seven. One nine four zero will get us, uh, the intent with engineering as well as talking with the county bone, bond, uh. Representatives is this will most likely get us on the other side of Cedar. And continual, continuously moving towards forty-five, our hope is to get as far as we possibly can. But with their suggestions as well as what we have to do with engineering, that is what I have to report, thank you.
Very good, one more time, uh, Mr. Pritchett, so that, uh, we can all hear what those, first of all, the streets that you listed.
Yes, sir.
These were streets that the county chose out of all of the information we provided for them.
There were some back and forth, one of the, one of the ones that was chosen would have been municipal. Municipal is only accessed by city vehicles, city equipment, well, one of the things that we did not want to do is to spend. Five hundred and seventy-nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars, uh, for. A mile of that, which would have cost if you were to do all of municipal right at thirty thousand dollars. What we did not want to do is take away from any other streets here in the city of Lamarck by, uh. By repaving municipal, does it need to be done, yes, does it need potholes fixed, yes, it does. Uh, but one of the things that I have directed and with our new public works director, as well as his staff. Are the use of our new pothole patch trailer as well as the ARPA equipment that will be coming in for streets. As well as when we talk in this workshop of the streets that affect as many citizens as we can with the money that we have, so. There are a few that we, uh, removed because frankly, we're the only ones that use them and we would rather, uh, take our very poor. And higher and, and worst quality streets that we have that we can afford with this bond to replenish.
Very good, one more time, Mr. Pritchett, for those that were trying to write down and, and.
Yes, sir, Moss Street, Rosewood Street, Meadow Lane, Norman Street. Acres or Akers, Azalea Courts, Nan Lee, Corbett. Bellevue and Fleming, many of you will also know Fleming, I have. A plethora of emails and phone calls from Fleming, it is most closely, uh, to the curve. When you pass under forty-five on the other side of Interstate forty-five. Uh, at the turn right before you get to our public works building, and the reason why we wanted to do that on this project. Is because a portion of Fleming Street where a lot of new housing developments, a lot of new traffic that is going, coming in and out of. Uh, we need the county to work with us because of there being a county road and bridge. Aspect to that street, and so we thought it best with working with engineering as well as the county, uh, to add that street. Because we need their expertise when it comes to the bridge, that is part of their responsibility and we want to make sure that we do this in a unified effort.
Very good, any questions for, uh, Mr. Pritchett as it relates to the, uh, county bond issue? We have, we have two folks, Ms. Nance, can you start us? Uh, I see Mayor Protem, I saw Mr. Lowry, anyone on this side? Mayor Protem first, Ms. Lowry next.
Earlier, there was some, the bridge, you mentioned the bridge.
Yes, sir.
That's a separate project. Uh, repair of the bridge.
And that's why, to do it together?
That, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Is that it?
Yeah.
That's lower.
Uh, for the record, could we get what, uh, districts these roads are in that we're gonna be repairing?
I, I can have our staff look those up.
Is that it?
You don't know off the top of your head?
No, sir.
Okay, you done?
Yeah, can we bring this back to the next council meeting? And then also could we bring back, uh, what streets are currently being paved and what district they're in as well? What has been done in the last twelve months?
Paved in general or with the ARPA project?
Repaved or, um. You know, whether it's concrete or paving, redone roadways.
Sure, yes, sir.
Appreciate that.
You done?
Yes, sir.
Very good, again, anyone on this side? All right, um, I suggested that whatever date the E D C does not choose, uh, would be a good date for us to. Uh, and to embark on this journey with our streets without objection. Hearing now, we'll move now to item, thank you, council, item, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I know that we're moving on to, to nine seven.
Mm-hmm.
If, if we could, uh, if it appeases council for us to couple our street plan workshop. With this special meeting, uh, obviously I can check with staff, but. N- knowing that there needs to be a special meeting called, uh, for item nine seven.
You want to have them both on the, uh, same agendas, what you're saying?
Well, or the same day, they don't have to be on the same agenda, but I, I, I try to be effective with y'all's time that you need to be up here.
No problem, without objection, council, would, would that be something we'd like to consider? Ms. Nance, Ms. Nance, go.
Um, sorry, I would just like to say because nine, seven is actually my item, if we do that, it would need to be in the same meeting. Because that would be a transfer of seat. So you can't have it before that meeting because it would be with a council member who won't be here after the meeting.
You would, if you do it that way, you would at least need to canvass the votes, seat the council person, then get into the idea of street.
Yes.
Okay. Council, do we want to do this on a regular meeting day or do we want to do this on this special meeting day? Ms. Nance, uh, you have a certain by law timeframe that you have to, uh, have these votes canvassed, is that correct?
Yes.
And so what day are you looking at?
Are we moving into nine seven? Are we moving into nine seven?
Yeah.
Uh, we don't have to. Unless Gus says that, oh, okay, I see your point, I see your point, let's, uh.
We don't have to combine them, I think that that.
You see what she did, JB?
I just forget I.
This is municipal government, man, what are you talking about? You can breathe and add complexity. I'm teasing, I'm teasing, well, let's leave it on a regular meeting.
Tell you the, the deadline, I believe, is always, is always.
We'll just leave it on a regular meeting, we'll just leave it on a regular meeting day, that's fine, thank you, thank you for that thought, JB, thank you for the clarification, Ms. Nance, let's move.
Start there.
She just said something at the very end.
You said it.
Ten days after the election.
After the election.
She has ten days to, we have ten days as a council to canvass the votes.
Ten days.
After the election, so she's gonna probably ask us to call one here sometime this week.
Yeah.
I would think, the election happens Saturday and we're just talking and we're not even on the, we're just violating all sorts of.
No, it's on the agenda.
But it's on the agenda, right?
Yeah.
Okay, well, let's move to item nine. Let's move to item nine seven, since we're having such a good time, all right, now. What we were saying, Mayor Protem, was I believe from the date of the election, you have ten days, so that has to be either sometime this week or next Monday at the latest, correct?
Yes.
Since we are, or two, thank you for that, James, since we are in item nine seven now, council, do we prefer to be here next Monday? Uh, would we like to have to canvass the votes on next Monday, is that what your recommendation is? Uh, I will entertain a motion unless, they, look at that, is there a second?
Second.
Let's do the, let, let's, the date today is what the, is the date ninth?
Yep. Oh, I can participate via Zoom, right?
Yeah, 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 for sure, for sure, and the only thing that we'll do. The only thing that we'll do that day is canvass votes and swear in the new council members, is that right?
Yes, over now, yes.
Okay, so that, so yeah, you can participate via Zoom. Uh. What is that date, today's the ninth, so that would be the sixteenth?
Yes, I think.
Okay, and so the date that we are looking at is June the sixteenth. Ms. Griffin, June the sixteenth, you gonna, are you gonna, are you gonna be here? Twenty twenty-five, I'm teasing, at six P M. You will be here, you sure? June sixteenth at twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty-five at six P M, I'll entertain that motion. Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor, aye, any opposed? City manager's report, as always, council, I'm gonna call out these, uh, items and those that we would like to discuss. Uh, just raise your hand or let me know and we will, uh, definitely get to you when those items, uh. Come up, ten one, anyone, twenty twenty-four Lamarck Police Department Annual Report, anyone? Ten two, April twenty twenty-five Municipal Court Stats, anyone? Ten three, April twenty twenty-five Council Finance Report, anyone? Ten four, May twenty twenty-five Sales Tax Revenue, anyone? Ten five, April twenty twenty-five Stormwater Report, anyone? Ten six, Items for the Good of the Order, that would be Mr. Pritchett.
First and foremost, I would love to invite as many of our residents to sign up, we have next Wednesday is going to be, I'm. Yes, next Wednesday is going to be our annual Juneteenth Gala, that is a free event, however, we are asking you to sign up. On our website, follow those links so that we may be poised for, for all of our guests. Uh, I would also take this time to invite, if there are any small business, large business, uh, in the city of Lamarck, we are. A platinum sponsor for the Texas City Lamarck Chambers. Annual Business Showcase, which will be this Wednesday, uh, that is where they showcase, uh. All of the businesses in both Texas City and the city of Lamarck, and so we want to have as many representatives. From different businesses that we may have, uh, in the city so that we can continue to showcase and show. Things that make our city great, that will be starting at six o'clock at the Doyle Center, our. Juneteenth Gala next Wednesday on the eighteenth, will be starting at six o'clock and will be held at McKinney. Uh, Memorial United Methodist Church on Nashbee. Uh, it is also my pleasure to announce to you a few other things that we have coming in. Our city as well, when we have, uh, this past Saturday, in case you were not aware, we had the. Grand opening of Hot Works over on seventeen sixty-five, if you're unfamiliar with Hot Works, what it is, is it. Is a room hotter than this one, if you can imagine that, and, uh, you do, uh. Exercise and all of the above in order to, to best utilize that, and so we would like to extend a thank you. Or, I'm sorry, to a welcome to Hot Works, uh, for the city of Lamarck as a whole. Uh, it is customary for us to talk about different operational things that we have in the city of Lamarck. Uh, one of which is we will be adding additional court dates to our docket for the remainder of the year. That do, does in part to best serve and utilize the time that we have had recently in court, we have noticed. Some operational needs as far as to add additional time so that we may be respectful that. Nobody is here for an excessive amounts of time, uh, and so when we continue that, we will, we will see, uh, that. Uh. That, that, as that continues to move on, it is also my pleasure to announce this week that we will be meeting with. Uh, the United Ways Board this week in reference to our partnership with the city of Lamarck as we continue to move forward. It was also discussed in past as well as for us to, uh, work through this as. Gus will tell you that when you say the word interlocal agreement, intergovernmental local agreement, uh, there's some complexities that. Are added in twenty twenty-five, but we are working on an intergovernmental agreement between us. And Galveston County Drainage District Two, we have had some very successful meetings with Mr. Bro, um, as well as Mr. Landry and his staff. As we continue to, to move forward in hurricane season as well as the drainage as a whole for our city. I think it's important for all of our aspects, we've been to several HOAs recently and that's always been a topic of discussion. And as it has been reported to me, I want to make sure that we are continuously bringing that up to y'all as well. Uh, it is also my pleasure to let you know that we will be meeting with Texas New Mexico Power as well as Center Point. Uh, one of which this week and one of which next week as we head into hurricane season, because if we all remember, we have had. Um, vegetation or other aspects of our city that we feel have gone unnoticed and we want to make sure that we course correct. As we move forward into hurricane season and just modern times as, as it is between, uh, our city and these organizations. And so that is on the calendar for the next two weeks, it is also my, um. My pleasure to add that we are, uh, continuously building our team and, and. Filling in, uh, gaps that we have had as well as the expansion of our stormwater crew and, and. Public works for, for drainage, it is also my important to, uh, mention a few other shining stars when it comes to. Uh, being fully staffed and that is our developmental services department, finally. Uh, on top of that, I would say that, uh, we are working to add members to other city departments as well as. Court, uh, administration, uh, police, fire, all of the above, so if you or someone you love is interested in a. Shining building team for a better city tomorrow, please ask them to visit our website. Um, my next matter is, oh, I'm sorry, we have, uh, I will have. To be in representation for the Texas City Manager Association Annual Conference, uh, which will be next week. Uh, at the tail end that takes me into the weekend, so I will be gone, uh, that Friday and in the weekend for the Texas City Manager Annual Conference. Um. My last matter is, uh, unfortunately not so happy, uh, or pleased to talk about. Um, it has come to my knowledge that we have had, uh, the unfortunate aspect of information. Uh, that has been leaked from city staff, it has been unfortunate that I have had to deal with this from a manager standpoint. As well as we continue to, uh. Mitigate any liabilities that we would have for the city. It has also been disclosed to me by city staff as we continue to have information disclosed, uh, as well as things discussed. information disclosed, uh, as well as things discussed, uh, that violate the Texas Open Meetings Act as well as our city charter uh, from members of our dais as well as members of our staff. And as we move forward to a better city of Lamarck, I will let you know as a citizen and a resident of our city as well as, uh, the manager that will do the utmost to make sure that we are doing the best for twenty thousand two hundred and eighty seven as well as the next twenty thousand two hundred and eighty seven move here, uh, we will not tolerate it. And so at this time, I have letters that I will pass out, um, to all the members uh, as it currently stands and we will have, uh, our continued efforts to make sure that we are correcting all issues inside of staff of the city of Lamarck and we will make sure that we will continue to do so, uh, for the betterment of the city of Lamarck as a whole. Thank you.
Very good. You got him, Gus?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Were you, were you done, Mr. Pritchett?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
This is public information now?
Hold on, we don't, we don't, we don't, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, Mr. Lowery, hold on. We don't know what that is. It was given to our city attorney. He's going to review it and then he'll, he'll direct us further on that one. We don't know what it is. So let's, let's leave that where it is until he does what he's going to do. And let's move now in the, in our meeting to finish the business of our meeting, which is item eleven. Before I begin to read executive session, council member District C, there is a complaint, uh, against your position. Would you like this complaint to be heard in open session or would you prefer this complaint to be heard in executive session?
Open session.
Open session. So let's not even consider reading executive session uh, or actions taken from executive session. The way this works is whichever council member, uh, has brought a complaint or if a council member has not brought a complaint, if it is a member who is not a council member. If it's a council member, the complaint is read and, uh, the commentary from that council member is heard first and foremost. If it is a, uh, person who is not a member of our council, uh, Gus Knabel reads those complaints into the record fully. Fully without interruption. From that point, whoever the member is that is being complained against then has the floor. And that person can respond. From that point, council members who have questions or comments are able to question or comment on those issues. And from that point, there may or may not be a vote. If there is any disruption in any part of this process, what will happen is I will say that you're disrupting our meeting. We need you to adhere to our rules. I'll say that twice. The third time, I am going to ask for microphones to be cut. Anything after that, I am going to entertain a motion that those persons, that person or those persons, whether you are Mayor Bell or you are, uh, Officer LaCica back there in the back, be removed and moved to a different location. Uh, we will not, if you are a member of council or staff, we will not remove you from a meeting so that you cannot represent your constituency. We will remove you from the room so that we can gain control over the meeting. Those have been the rules, uh, and this is how we are trying to do this in the back, uh, if we're successful. Now, there is, how many complaints, Gus? Are there?
Two, maybe three?
Very good. Mr. Knabel, you can proceed in reading the complaints.
The first one is from Councilmember, Councilmember Ross and it's about
Speaking to the microphone, Gus.
I'm sorry.
Did Councilmember Ross make the complaint?
Yes.
Well, we're going to allow him to then, we're, you're only, uh, reading complaints if people have complained that are not council members.
Okay.
And so is he, is his complaint first?
Yes.
Mr. Ross, you have the floor.
So, uh, I wrote a complaint due to an email sent by Councilmember Lowery from outside the organization to our EDC Director, Ms. Nance and our city manager with his concerns about how the Economic Development Center giving grants and brakes. I don't know why B R A K E S brakes for my car would be the Economic Development Center, but whatever. Um, one, you don't get to decide on the loan money that I'm doing and what I'm going to do with it. You don't get to direct people not to give anything when I'm trying to rent a space that they haven't filled in six years. You do not, as a councilperson, get to decide what businesses are here, especially when I have the receipts of no sales tax in a business that was in a home that got fifty grand. And by the way, June twenty third, you get to hear it as a citizen. So, not as a councilperson. That is the email that he sent.
Are you, Mr. Ross, are you asking for a censure?
I'm asking for a censure due to our councilperson deciding, trying to decide what businesses come into the city of Lamarck.
Very good. Mr. Lowery, do you have a response?
Uh, yes, I do.
Very good.
My first, uh, first thing is, um, it is highly inappropriate to, to coordinate an attack on a sitting elected official. You guys have done this again.
Man, ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to allow for, uh, Mr. Lowery to respond uh, and we are not going to interrupt him or disrupt the meeting. Thank you. Mr. Lowery, you can, you may continue.
You guys coordinated attacks on a sitting elected official without even notifying them until the agenda is prepared, leaving me defenseless in how to respond to it. Highly inappropriate. Number two, to be, to have an ethics complaint brought to me, brought against me by someone is suing me is highly unethical. Highly unethical. Number three, I do have a say as an elected official and as a constituent on what would be good and what won't work in the city of Lamarck. I think your Lego idea is about the dumbest thing I've ever heard, okay? It, 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 there's a lot of questionable things around you and children, in my opinion, okay?
Whoa, Mr. Lowery. Mr. Lowery, we're not, we're not, we're not, yeah, well, we're not going to let you make an allegation or, or I'm not going to even let him make an allegation. So, Mr. Lowery, that's fine. What we're not going to do is make any criminal allegations against anyone on the dais. We're not going to do that.
Responding.
Well, you, well, it is within limit. We can, we have to protect, here's the issue. We, as a council, have to protect the citizens of Lamarck and the franchise that we call Lamarck. We cannot jeopardize that by exposing ourselves to unnecessary liability. And I believe you can refrain from making those types of attacks against individuals and you have the capacity to defend yourself without it, Mr. Lowery. So please start doing that.
Well, you know, he just sat there and attacked my business and attacked me, so I responded to it. So that is my response to you. It's unethical. And if there's a complaint against anybody, whether it's me or Mayor Bell, you need to prepare him for it. It's highly unprofessional. It's disgusting. It's inappropriate. It, it is against, any American citizen has a right to know what the allegation is against them and to prepare for it. So to, to, to set up an attack and an assault, it's highly inappropriate. And, and I'm asking for more professionalism out of you, Mr. Gus, and out of Kiara. It's inappropriate. Mayor Bell, I would do the same thing for you. If they're going to plan an attack and assault on you, it needs to be brought forth when, when, prior to the agenda is brought out. Highly inappropriate. But, uh, let's go to the next one.
Well, wait, 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 wait. This is what always happens, guys. You're seeing it in public. Now, we're not, and we're not going to do that. If you're through responding, then we're going to open this up to the council. But you, you mentioned some things, Mr. Lowery, that I'm going to address here. I have also, uh, have had complaints against me. I'm, I'm speaking from personal experience and I want to address two things that you said. I've had complaints lodged against me and the very first time that I have seen every one of them was when they came in the form of an agenda, Mr. Lowery. I've never seen any complaint against me before an agenda was posted, never, ever. That is my experience. Perhaps the others have their experience, number one. Number two, Mr. Lowery, I just have to tell you, I, I really want to move past these things, but you said something I just want to correct. Point of information. You said it is highly inappropriate and unethical for a council member who is suing you to then file a complaint on you, uh, to have you censure. Mr. Lowery, you're suing myself, Councilwoman Yancy, Chief and Chief Randall Argon, and you have made several complaints against us. Wow, you're suing us.
Actually, point of information, Mayor.
Go ahead.
The complaints have been brought to me and I was the voice for the constituents. So there's some clarification there. Anytime a complaint was made against you or Ms. Yancy, you guys assumed that it was me.
It was you.
And then you made me act as if I was the one bringing the complaint. So you, I got the attack back there.
Okay, okay. So, so we're, we're, we're good. I said what I had to say. You said, you clarified in a way, okay. Now, I believe that they, we're going to open this up. Uh, before we get back to you, Mr. Ross, Ms. Yancy and Mayor Protem have not had a chance to say anything. Ms. Yancy, did you want to add to this first complaint?
Yes, to, to our, uh, I'm not feeling very well. I'm, I'm doing my best to be here. But this is the, uh, the ridiculousness that we have had to deal with. Um, Councilwoman Lowery, do you admit that this is your email that you wrote? Do you admit that it's your email?
She's asking you a question.
Is this, is this your email that you wrote?
Yes, it says my name right on it.
Okay, I just want to make, make sure. Mayor, am I allowed to read it on the record? Read it out loud.
You may.
This is from Councilwoman Joseph Lowery. I'm concerned about the Economic Development Corporation giving grants or breaks. They should, uh, the correct spelling would be B R E A K E S on a lease for James Ross. James Ross does not have the mental capacity to do research and realize that a Lego store is not going to work with our demographics. We are a very poor community with high crime and nobody's going to come here to buy Legos from James Ross when they can buy them at the dollar store. Many citizens are concerned that the Economic Development Corporation might get duped into giving him money or even break on a, or even a break on a lease. I hope the Economic Development Corporation can see that nobody's going to buy Legos from James Ross when they can buy them on eBay, Amazon, or even the local dollar store. James Ross said his store is set to open October one. Hope there is no truth to that if the taxpayers are footing the bill. And there's a picture of him beside a Lego and, um, Six Brothers Concrete. And Mr. Lowery has said that, that that's from him. We have asked this council to go one-on-one to talk to one another before, uh, they put things on social media because we are adults, we are professionals and we have asked that if you have a problem to go one-on-one and that continues not to happen. I do apologize to you, um, on behalf of this council. Uh, you have been harassed. You have, uh, had to deal with some things online as well, uh, and it's unfortunate. Um, because people should be allowed to do business in the city of Lamarck and all of us, because of the slander and the defamation, uh, have had to endure setbacks because of this. Um, it is, it is his opinion uh, that he feels that way. I, I don't agree with his allegation without proof about it, about children. That is a, that's a very serious thing to say. And now we have it on record as defamation. But Mayor, I think this is inappropriate for any councilman to do, especially without going through the things that we have asked, which is to go one-on-one if they have a question or concern. But did he go one-on-one to you about some of these concerns?
His only question to me was when was the store planning on opening? And I just said October because I plan on having a couple of things open and running by October. Especially now that the state of Texas has changed Scott Bakery laws and I can make a hundred and fifty grand out of my kitchen.
Yeah.
Starting one September. Sounds like I need to be open one October doing something.
Yeah.
Business partner and I are already booking a trailer.
So, um, I would like to ask a question of JB. Can I ask a question of JB?
You can. Let's try to keep it on the, uh, this complaint.
Uh, it, it's about breaks. Have, have we, have we provided, uh, companies? Has the EDC ever provided, uh, subsidies for companies that have come into the business with us?
I believe that that's more of a detailed question for the Economic Development Corporation, but if you're asking me if I know of past incentives that have been given, yes, ma'am.
We have.
Yes, ma'am.
We, we have allowed for
Correct.
for, for, some people call them subsidies.
I, I, incentives, subsid, subsidiary, subsidies, thank you. Uh, the, um, as well as grant programs that, that they may
Okay.
take part in as new business or, uh, uh, established businesses in the city of Lamarck, yes, ma'am.
And I would like to ask Councilwoman Lowery, is there a problem with giving a subsidy to a person who has served on this council if they're trying to open a business in a building that has been baking for six years? Is there a problem with giving a subsidy that we've done before, Mr. Lowery?
I think it's highly inappropriate for a sitting council member to set up a business prior to him leaving council. It, it reeks of, of corruption. It's inappropriate. And me morally and ethically, I wouldn't do it, but other people up here, I guess, will.
So he has a problem with that, but is it, is that against the law?
That would be a question for legal counsel.
Is that against the law, Gus? Because that's the case and Mr. Juan Quado, who though he's deceased, he couldn't ask for a subsidy and nobody could if they served. You've got a lot of people who own businesses that serve up council.
I
Is that against the law?
Is, is the question, is it against the law to apply for subsidy or is it against the law to start a business?
Is it against the law to have served on council previously and then try to open up a business and ask for a subsidy? Is that against the law?
I, well, I would defer to the EDC's lawyer. The EDC has a lawyer who provides them with legal counsel on who they can give money to, number one, and what conflicts disclosures are required.
Okay.
Which is what is in, as part of every single um, bid process that the city does, that I'm aware.
Right.
So it's
I do know, and this is from, um, working with the EDC in the past, that they have allowed for subsidies for businesses.
Yeah, I mean
They have some incentive. We have grants as well.
Yeah.
So I, I wanted people to understand and if you could come back with an answer, that would be great, just so we can have some clarity because there are some people that want to paint people out to be corrupt and they're not. There are some people where when other people do it, it's not a problem. But when certain people do it, all of a sudden, it is a problem. And I think we can make this a teachable moment to let people know we do have subsidies in our city. When you serve on council, you do learn a lot of information that you didn't know before. You do find out about certain practices that you can apply for. Um, and so there are some people that like to say it's corrupt. Why is that corrupt? When previous people have done it before, what corrupt then? And all, now all of a sudden, it's corrupt. I have a problem with that. I do believe that if, um, if Councilwoman Joseph Lowery would apologize for some of the stuff that he said, I think we wouldn't have to do a censor. But this keeps, keeps going on and on and on. Some of these things on this email could have been eliminated. Just get to the point. I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, very good. Uh, Mayor Protem, did you have something you wanted to add?
You know, I've set my standards here when we look at these, uh, censure complaints and, um, social media is not, uh, an any sort of evidentiary standard. Uh, it's not factual, it's not, doesn't stand up in court. There are standards for municipal, municipal governments if you're speaking and, uh,
doesn't stand up in court. There are standards for municipal municipal governments if you're speaking and and so, you know, that's that those are my standards there. Those have been discussed as well with our city attorney and others far competent in this area. And however, my standards do say a document and and Mr. Lowry, Councilmember Lowry, this one item just bothered me. This, the one about working together here as council members, James Ross does not have the mental capacity to do research. That's a bridge too far for me on that one. And I would hope that you apologize if that's appropriate there as council member Yancey suggested, but in terms of this, all the rest is for me not not relevant. Those are opinions with regard to and 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 in some cases misinformation, I think, not being getting accurate information, but that one statement is a bridge too far for me under my standards. James Ross, that mental capacity to do research. We're not here to, I'm not here to insult you. We'd never do that. Would never do that to anybody else on on council in that regard. Being straightforward with you as I usually am, right?
Yes, sir.
That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Lowry, I I I'm I am having to echo the comments of Mayor Protem. This particular this particular email was an email. And it went to the Economic Development Director. It went to Councilmember District D. It went to the city clerk, and I believe it went to interim city manager, interim at the time. And so that 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 is not a social media issue. This is something that is inside the vein of the business of the city of Lamarck. And Mr. Lowry, I just I really need to just share this with you. You have the capacity to represent District C without all of this. You can do that. You have the capacity to represent without these things. And I am looking forward to the day that we start that. The unnecessary mental capacity, things of that nature. I get it. It's funny. I see you laughing. You think it's a joke. But apparently to the rest of the community, some may say, some may not say. It's not a joke. And here's the issue. The issue is for me, at the end of the day, it really puts us in situations where we might be liable as a as a municipality. And that's dangerous. And so we want to steer away from that. You have a right to your opinion. You might not think a Lego store is appropriate. I get it. I understand it. You have a right to that opinion. But what we don't want to do is continue the part of that where we go beyond that and then it becomes about the person and not about whatever the issue is because it clouds it and it leaves room for other folks to respond. And and we're here where we are now with a bunch of this. Mr. Ross, did you have something? We're going to wind this one up. But you said you had something you wanted. Now, if you had something, Mr. Lowry has an opportunity to respond.
All I have to say is, Mr. Lowry, you do not have the right to discuss any of my personal financial business. The loan for one hundred and fifty to one hundred and eighty thousand dollars where I have to, if something fails, sell my house to pay it off. You do not have the right to tell me, a fifty-two-year-old man, how to spend my money. Period. I don't tell you how to spend your money. You don't get to tell me how to spend my money.
Are you done?
I'm done.
Did you want to respond?
Yeah, so I just want to save the time for the taxpayers and and everybody up here. Everybody's time is important. Mr. Campion, I genuinely take to heart what you said. However, I'm going to decline apologizing. And I'm I have every right to an opinion. It's my First Amendment right. I'm going to exercise it. And that's what this is all about. And but I'll go ahead and I'll entertain your guys' circus. And I would like to entertain a motion to censor me for exercising my First Amendment right. So anybody else?
Well, I have to entertain it because I'm the presider.
All right, let's do it.
Well, I would have to call for that unless you just wanted to make a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to censor me for exercising my First Amendment right.
Okay, there's there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I will second.
You're going to second that? Any discussion?
Discussion, yes. So First Amendment rights also don't allow for you to block and ban people from stuff you're saying. That's not First Amendment. That's cowardice. First Amendment allows people to respond to what you're saying about them. You're not a First Amendment free speech person. You're a, Amma Joseph Lowry says it, so that's what it is, person.
The First Amendment as a history teacher and a government degree from the University of Texas at Austin does not give you the right to harass. So I I do not like that motion because he said it is based on the First Amendment and that's why I did not second that motion. It is really sad that we can't model the expectation of professionalism and apologize so that you won't have to be censored. Just apologize as grown men.
I'm gonna let you respond.
So we won't have to censor you. It's we don't want to censor council people when we can be, we can set that, we can model the expectation. Mr. Lowry, a lot of decisions I make, I make based on my children. I look at it. What would my what would my children think for every decision?
Let's stick to.
Your your, what I'm saying to you is, as a father, you want to model the expectation. I would have thought that you would have apologized for that so we can move on, so we won't have to censor you. To our residents who are listening, this is not something we take pleasure in. This is not something we take pleasure in to censor, but we do have to have a standard of ethics. We do have to have some form of professionalism. Every time we have to censor someone, it's not something we look forward to. We work behind the scene to say, can you go one-on-one and fix this? And oftentimes, the answer is no, and that's why we're here. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah.
It's it's enjoyable up here for a couple of people. It's obvious. I'm just here to do the will of the people. I agreed to censor myself to help things move along. But if if it's not something you want to do, then why do you keep doing it? Because it's, you know, you you keep doing it. And guess what? It doesn't do anything, but besides waste everybody's time in the room because next week and tomorrow and the day after that, I'm going to say something on social media and I don't care if you agree with it or not. I'm going to continue fighting corruption. I'm going to continue exposing things like illegal campaign donations. I'm going to continue those things. It's not going to stop. So if you want to censor me every meeting, I'll I'll agree with it. Let's go ahead and censor me. It doesn't do anything. You're wasting your time. You're wasting my time. You're wasting their time. So go ahead. I'll you I'll I'll agree with your censor. Go ahead and do it. It doesn't do anything. You think it bothers me? Let's go ahead and do it. I I offered to do it for you. I will censor myself to make you guys happy, to make you feel better.
Just apologize.
Let's do it.
But that's an apology of Joseph. When you censor yourself, that's an apology, right?
No, it ain't an apology. I don't, I'm not.
We're gonna we're gonna move past this one. Are we are we? Are we good? Are we good on this one? Because that's just one. No, we got to vote. We got to vote. We got to vote. First censure, let's vote. There's a motion and a second.
I would like to amend his to take away based on First Amendment rights because that could lead us to liability. So just censure without based on my First Amendment rights.
Are you asking for, are you asking to amend the motion?
Amend the motion.
Well, I would like to make a motion to amend the motion is what you need to be saying.
I would like a motion to amend.
Kiara, are you listening?
I would like a motion to amend the motion just to censor.
You can't wait, hold on.
Or you can just let it die.
You can't amend his motion unless he agrees.
Are you going to agree to that friendly amendment?
I already agreed to.
Well, let's well, let's vote. Let's vote. All in favor of, let me let me get it right, all in favor of censuring Joseph Lowry because he is what did you say? You were expressing your right, First Amendment right? Okay. All in favor of censuring Joseph Lowry for exercising his First Amendment right signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay, all those opposed, say nay, nay.
Okay, can I, can I, I'm so sorry. Can I get a voice vote? It's not very.
Let's get a voice vote. All right, let's start with Councilmember District A, yea or nay? Go ahead, Joe.
What's our agenda item? What's the item?
It's to hear a complaint about Councilmember Lowry, and this is the action item from it. There was a motion made by Councilmember Lowry to censure himself for specifically for exercising his First Amendment rights. Councilmember Ross seconded that.
And now we're voting on that, just that one.
There were, there was discussion about amendments because it is that the it has now been seconded. It can only be amended with the maker of the motion's permission. He will not give it, which is his right. And so now we have to dispose of the motion that has been seconded.
By calling the vote.
The council.
By calling the vote. And so Kiara is wanting a voice vote, right? And so I'm going to start with.
Do what now?
I just need to know who, yea.
You you censured, you you want to censure him for his First Amendment rights?
Okay.
All right, Joe.
So yea, Lowry, yea, Campion, nay, Bill, nay, Yancey, nay, Ross.
Yeah.
Got it.
All right, that's one.
Can I now make a motion to censure on this email?
You want to take them one at a time, Gus? All right, make your motion.
So I make a motion to censor Councilman Lowry for trying to disrupt any a small business coming to the city of Lamarck.
There's a second.
I second that with an amendment. We, can I do a part of discussion? We just need to censor him. Period. Let's just censor him, period. Can you amend your motion?
Yes, I will amend the motion to just censure Joseph Lowry.
I second that motion, Mayor.
Any further discussion? Go ahead, Joe.
The censure is based upon.
This is.
Based on this? We are only on this right now, right?
All right. We got a motion. We got a second. Do we need to beat the horse? Dead, more.
Call for the vote there.
There you go. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold on, Joseph. Any opposed? There you go. All right. Item two. There are there two or three? Because is this one long one?
Yeah, and I and I, if I may, Mayor, I may.
Okay.
Y'all are free to not take, y'all are free to not, but I would advise that council pass on this for right now because this is the subject of a letter that we just received. And I would like.
Okay.
I.
Yeah, we don't even want us to talk about it then, huh?
I would prefer you not.
Okay, well, I'm going to do what you say.
I I want to, I want to read the complaint.
Yeah, hold on, hold on. Hold on, okay, Mr. Lowry, wait a minute. Let me let me get some direction, okay? Hold what you got. He is, he being Mr. Lowry is asking to read the complaint is what you're saying? You want to read it? Mr. Lowry, you're saying you want to read it?
I think what he wants to do is read the post that generated the complaint. It's what he wants to do.
And I could summarize it.
What I, my advice that council is free to ignore is to not do that because that
Yeah.
correspondence is part of a demand letter that the city just received.
Yeah, we're not.
So I would strongly advise the council to just move on.
These are one of the things, Mr. Lowry, when I when I talk about keeping us out of liability, these are one of the things that one of the decisions we have to make. And so I'm going to, as a chair, decline. I'm going to decline any further comment.
I'm more than willing and and ready to engage in any type of lawsuit.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that, but 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 we still have to protect the franchise. We we still have to protect the twenty-two, twenty thousand, two hundred and eighty folks.
It's still a complaint brought against me.
I know, I know, but we are not going to hear tonight, but I appreciate you, though. I know, you could, I know, but but I appreciate you. Okay, let's move on, Mr. Lowry.
I really would like.
Mr. Lowry, I'm asking you to move on. And I know that you're going to comply. I'm wait, 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 wait. I am moving on. One way or the other, either I'm going to move on right here so that we can get back to the business of the people or I'm going to ask Mr. Pritchett to ask one of these nice law enforcement officers that are in and around this whole room to come and help me move on. Let's move on. We heard a complaint. You have been censured. You're chomping at the bit. I get it, Mr. Lowry. That fight will have to happen another day because as mayor, I am going to look out for what is in the best interest of the citizens of this great city, and they don't like lawsuits. I get that you're more than capable of handling yourself. I do understand and appreciate that. But the rest of the twenty-two, twenty thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine people, we would rather avoid them. And so that's what we'll do tonight. Thank you for your willingness, though.
Yes, sir.
Item thirteen.
Can we bring this back up?
Sure, we can, we can, once Gus.
Sure that there will be ample opportunity in the future. Thank you.
All right, all right, go.
You were moving to item thirteen, and I actually forgot a fantastic item of the good of the order. I apologize.
Is it going to be good news because we're not?
It's fantastic news.
Okay, we'll go back to good of the order for some fantastic news and then we're going to go back to thirteen.
Yes, sir.
And move forward. Go ahead.
Again, I thank you for the grace and I apologize for the slipping my mind. We've had a busy day. Those of you who know that as we continue to make the city better, administration and overseeing our operations is at the forefront of each morning, each afternoon and each evening. And so I am very pleased to say that I have chosen a step up for my deputy city manager, and I will be announcing this to our department heads as we step into our meeting recap of this of the meeting that we're currently sitting in tomorrow morning, but I thought that it'd be best to go ahead and announce it to the public as well as to council. And so this person comes not only with master's level of education, CPM certification, as well as the utmost professionalism that I have seen in the city of Lamarck. And so it is with great pleasure that I announce Ms. Amy J. Miller to be the step-up deputy city manager for the city of Lamarck.
Amy. Good job. Good job. Was that, was that? All right, you came at a very good time because now we're into a quest, request and announcements, and I believe we can congratulate Ms. Amy when when we get to our turn. And so without further ado, Joseph, I think it's your turn first because last time you weren't here, remember? And and James had to go first, so you're first.
Thank you, Mayor Bell, for the opportunity. I just want to bring up some stuff. I'm having a really hard time, Joshua, with communication with you. I don't know if your phone is broken or your email is not working, but if you could respond to my emails and text messages, it would be fantastic. Mr. Pritchett? And then, hello, sir?
I hear you.
Okay, and then.
I will respond to things that have to do with city business.
That would be great. And also, if there's meetings in my district with my constituents, could you please inform me of those things?
You not want me to respond, Miss Mayor?
Let's leave it, leave it be.
So yeah, please, please, when there's meetings with constituents and there's things that I need to know about in my district, please notify me of those things so I can be aware. Also, sit reps, for some reason, when you took over, there was a lot of communication that just abruptly stopped throughout the community. So I don't know what happened with with staff and employees and whatnot. So we are allowed to communicate. Just for the record, we are allowed to communicate with staff. We're just not allowed to give them directives, but there's been a mass a brick wall put up. And I don't know what happened, but maybe you can help fix that. Again, drainage in the city, really important, my district. It started, Mr. Garcia was doing an excellent job at the the drainage, working on the culverts and then started over on Austin Street. If we could continue what Mr. Garcia started, my my constituents would be grateful. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Ross?
Congratulations, Ms. Miller. That's amazing news. You got joy, Mr. Pritchett. Can't wait to see you next week. So I can start talking to my investors and getting things going. Community yard sale, rummage sale to VFW, whatever you want to call it, Saturday, ten to four, please come out. I've got a small room that my daughter had finally emptied out, completely full of donations. So I got, we got a lot of stuff to put out there. If you have more donations, please send me an email, message on Facebook, whatever. I'll be happy to come try to pick it up. It's been a pleasure. Still got some fights left in me. Don't worry. I still need to chief mayorman, still need to learn more about Avenue B since we've been asking about that for a long time. So as soon as we can find that information out. So as soon as we can find that information out of it. Really like that one. Um, but, thank you all.
To Councilman, uh, Ross, I have enjoyed serving with you. Um, um, I do apologize that you were not able to finish, um, it's been quite toxic. I've talked to many elected officials and they have assured me that they've never seen climates like we're seeing them in Texas now, but to our, the people of Lamarck, we are governing, we are doing the people's work. Uh, I brought you great news from uh, Washington DC, when we went to visit and talked to uh, local congressman as we're trying to make sure that our area is adequately funded in the midst of the doge cuts. That was a very um, eye-opening experience, I really encourage our council to go, someone else probably needs to go next year. Uh, they do have opportunities where we can also uh, bring a high school student to go on that trip as well, so I look forward to bringing one of our high schools, uh, one of our high school students from some of the high schools that we represented here in Lamarck, so we had a chance to interface with some college students and high school students, and I didn't even know that was an opportunity for us. But being a part of Bay Hop has definitely opened up our opportunities, um, we've been a part of Bay Hop, I think, the last three years now, and the U, the U of H land they're talking about is the nine hundred and three acres that U of H owns behind the dog track, and that we've been in sincere talks to them about wanting to develop that and do something with that land, that is what governing is about, trying to develop and bring opportunities to your uh, city. Um, Mr. Pritchett, I do wanna see if we can create an ordinance perhaps, or some type of ruling Kiara, where, when entities apply for that section three, that we can have an ordinance or policy in place that we have a community lion's own position in place where one of our uh, students or recent college grads from College of Mayland can apply to be a part of that, and then that will ensure if it's enshrined in policy, that our uh, that, that, that the people of Lamarck are um, involved with our contractors here in the area, I think that's a good something to look into, and, and Gus, I know some cities, they do do that, have that. And um, section three is something that you really wanna pay attention to, it's a way to educate uh, your community and also provide um, educational and employment opportunities. So I, I wanna let our uh, citizens know about that. I've been trying to visit some of our sister cities in lieu of some of the bad press to let them know that this is a city that is welcoming and that we love our sister cities, I've been visiting Hitchcock, I've been visiting Dickinson, and I've been visiting Texas City, some of their programs, some of their city council, just to let them know we are a city on the movement, that we are a positive city, and that we will celebrate positivity, and so I am glad to announce that we've attended some uh, celebrations of Juneteenth, and I encourage you to visit that as well, because this is the home, the county of Juneteenth. And so, um, and they're very appreciative when council members show up and make themselves known to say, we are here to support you, so I encourage our council members here to do that as well. Uh, Joe, I know that there's a lot of things happening with H GAG right now, and I encourage us to keep, I know I'm your alternate, so please keep me informed of that, thank you, uh, Joshua Pritchett, for getting that into local agreement with drainage too, I really appreciate that, then it's gonna help our drainage that we have in District A. And also for Jefferson Street and working on Brown Street. I look forward to that street plan that you're gonna show us, so we can uh, see that, and also uh, what the young lady earlier, uh, Ms. Trump said about uh, Steve Ward, that's in District A. So we can make sure that that gets cleared up, if you don't mind, quickly. Um, and uh, there was a program at T M L, I don't know if y'all remember, they, there was a city that actually had some type of agreement with a generator company where if residents were able to get a reduced generator if they lived in that city. So could you look to see if that's a program perhaps we can become a part of, where the residents of Lamarck can get a reduced generator in, in, because of hurricane season? And with that, as you can see, I'm sick, so get your, make sure you take care of yourself, people are contagious. And I'm looking forward to the Juneteenth Gala and the uh, Life of Liberty party as well, thank you, Mayor, that's all I have.
Can you please put your mask back on now? Joe, Joe Camion doesn't like it.
The uh, let's get, saving, congratulations, excellent choice of that, I, I agree with that. It's good to have that diversity, and for me, diversity is not a bad word, uh, in my world. We all are diverse in our pretty different ways. And uh, the um, uh, Mr. Ross, it's been, it's, it's not the end of our, our friendship, let me say that, you know that. I much enjoyed our travels together. And uh, I, I, I much, I much enjoy our travels together, um, our talks. I've learned a lot from you in terms of your experiences, you've educated me, and uh, we'll continue that, uh, that here, God willing. Uh, the uh, I, I, I do have to, has Shannon left? No, I, I would like follow-up, because even I have smelled it recently, uh, over on um, Newman and Main Street, and I don't know where it's coming from, I got out, but this, the Main Street is overgrown there, and we have to talk to the tech dot to get that mode. Uh, but it's not a pretty smell there, uh, on that side, and then as well as Duroe, and we need to do our best to communicate that to the residents there on that side. Um, follow-up on opportunities, and, and you're right, Councilman Yancy, I'd sent out uh, the Kiara, uh, your, your, the information on the half a billion dollars in community development block grant dollars. Um, once again, I remind uh, members of council and the public as well to go to the GLO website, the General Land Office website. The final date for submission of comments on the state's action plan is June sixteenth. And unfortunately, and I did mention it when the Bay Hop person was here, but uh, because there was not enough advocacy in terms of business, one of the uh, economic development priorities that is available under C D B G will not be included in that action plan. And um, but home repairs, home rebuilds, and uh, our municipal infrastructure is uh, all uh, priorities under the action plan. And um, especially, uh, Mr. Pritchett, project-ready projects, they won them. And I had the opportunity to visit the uh, the director of that program, Jet, and um, he's looking forward, once the HUD approves the plan, to get from Lamarck. And um, uh, once again, thank you, that's all I had there.
Very good, Ms. Nancy wanted to.
Yeah, one of our constituents just gave me another that, we wanna congratulate Christine Turner for your award, and I'm so sorry, I forgot, could you tell us real quick what that award was that you received? Cause anytime that our staff is doing something amazing, I wanna make sure that we know.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I was nominated for the twenty twenty-five Greater Houston American Society of Public Administration's Public Interface Award. So it was based on all the different public um, community service I've done, as well as being the finance director for the city of Lamarck.
Congratulations, congratulations. Absolutely, absolutely.
Congratulations to Amy Miller, our beloved librarian, and to you, Tony Griffin, congratulations as well, that's all I have.
Very good, you wanted to add some mental health?
Uh, yeah, well, two things, congratulations, Amy, um, on moving up. And um, also, it's Mental Health Month, uh, this month, and it's uh, something to take very seriously. Um, I lost my brother to suicide a year ago, and uh, out of nowhere, so reach out to your friends, uh, maintain communication, um, especially in youth too. Uh, there's, there's a lot of mental health issues, and um, you never know what someone's dealing with on the inside, so reach out to a friend, maintain communication with them, check on them, and Galveston County Sheriff's Department does have a hotline. Um, but uh, something to take seriously.
Very good. All right, let's uh, let, let me say, uh, let me remind you, I believe it's already been said, but I believe next Wednesday, is that right, Mr. Pritchett? Next Wednesday at McKinney uh, Memorial United Methodist Church, uh, we will have our Juneteenth Gala. Uh, it, Juneteenth is important, uh, especially uh, in our county, because this is the cradle, this is the birthplace uh, of Juneteenth, this, this county. And, and that's extremely important to this county for a lot of reasons, it's important to this county because uh, we are establishing uh, with the federal government, a freedom trail. Uh, a freedom trail that will mark the trail uh, of those uh, that uh, that, that, that travel to freedom. Uh, it's important because uh, it is a historical moment in time that we should always honor, uh, so that we can always remember. Uh, it's important because it is, it's tradition. Uh, it is tradition in our community to acknowledge uh, what we as a community did to move humanity forward. Uh, our community had the opportunity to take part in that in a way that ought be memorialized uh, for the long term. Uh, and if you don't care about any of those things, uh, this county uh, being the birthplace of Juneteenth, uh, will have added economic benefit. Uh, sales tax benefit, uh, events and things like that going on all over the county, I believe on Saturday, Hitchcock kicked us off with a Juneteenth parade. Uh, and so, uh, every uh, city, I believe, and I could be wrong, in this county has some sort of uh, honoring of Juneteenth, because uh, it brings so much to this county, uh, from history also to economics. So whatever side you fall on, uh, it is a positive uh, plus in our community. Secondly, uh, Mr. Pritchett, I'd like a stormwater and storm readiness report next meeting. Um, uh, we wanna know uh, what our city looks like as storm season, hurricane season, uh, comes on stronger and stronger as the summer months go on. I wanna know about ditches being dug and cleaned out, right? Um, and so if you can get that for us, and if you can help us understand how many folks we have on each team, what sorts of equipment that we have, and what the plan would look like if in fact uh, a hurricane, heaven forbid, uh, would be coming toward us. We need to know what resources we have right now, what the plan is right now, what assets we have right now. Make sense? Third, uh, I also wanna report on Heroes Village. There's been uh, a Memorial Day uh, that just passed, uh, and certainly we honor those who made the ultimate sacrifice uh, for us to live free. Uh, but we also want to honor those who have served and uh, have served with distinction uh, who still walk among the living, uh, they deserve housing. They deserve decent, adequate housing. They deserve to be a part of a community in which they are valued. Uh, and so because of that, Heroes Village is a really important project for our community, uh, and I'd love to get an update on that, and I'd love for us to know as a council what we can do to move that project, that housing project forward. Now, uh, I want to also congratulate Shannon Bro, Shannon, you're one of, one of the nicest people I've ever met, man, it's, it's, it's it's crazy how nice you are. And um, um, and you're a good young man, uh, and I appreciate that you are here with us, uh, and I value you. Uh, and I wanna say congratulations, because I believe the sky's the limit. You seem to be a person who is teachable, coachable, uh, approachable. Some folks have already told me about how you are affable and open to conversations. Uh, and I'm just excited about what you can do for the people of Lamarck. Um, and I wanted to tell you, uh, congratulations, uh, and I thought that JB made an excellent choice when he chose you. Uh, secondly, Ms. Miller, congratulations. I, I'm trying to understand, are you, did you say step up, or did you, did you say deputy, is she your deputy?
She's, that's my intent, I'm trying to give her an exit ramp uh, in case she doesn't like what she's getting herself into.
Okay, so she is at some point the deputy?
But starting tomorrow, she will be relocating from the Lamarck Public Library and be joining me in the city manager's office. She will be shadowing me in all meetings, she will be uh, working with me on projects that we already have, as well as maintaining uh, her, her responsibilities at the higher level for the library and and, and divying up the others to the current staff. And if all goes according to plan, we'll be looking for a new uh, librarian for the city of Lamarck, and we will have a fantastic deputy city manager.
Very good, very good, I can't say anything about that, cause Kiara's gonna say that that's not on the agenda. So we're gonna take your word for it, and we're gonna say to, uh, Ms. Amy Miller, congratulations, again. You are clearly more than capable of doing all that the deputy city manager does, uh, and exceeding those uh, those responsibilities as well, welcome, welcome, welcome. Uh, and the young lady sitting next to you? First and foremost, let me say this, there are, I believe, if, if memory serves me correctly, there were seven individuals uh, in that race initially, is that right, Ms., Ms. Griffin? And I, I just wanted to congratulate all seven folks uh, in that particular race, because it takes courage to sign your name on a sheet of paper, to believe that you have the capacity to represent other people and to make their lives better. It takes a lot of courage to do that, so for every person that appeared on that ballot, I want to say, thank you. Takes a lot of courage to serve in this capacity. Uh, and I would hope uh, that this wouldn't be your last time volunteering, engaging uh, in the city of Lamarck and the business of the people of Lamarck. Now, having said that, uh, Ms. Griffin, I wanna congratulate you. Uh, I have saw your work firsthand, uh, you and I started volunteering together with seniors. Uh, I came to you and I said, I wanna hang out with seniors, and you said, I know where they and you said, I know where they live, and you literally took me to the complex. And, and, and so I, 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 I started to volunteer with you in our senior community, and I saw your heart for kindness. Um, and, and it has culminated in this wonderful, wonderful experience of having you uh, in the future as an elected representative of our community, and I am excited about it. Uh, because I know you, I know your capacity to serve, and I know your propensity for kindness. Boy, do we need a lot of kindness. But congratulations. Absolutely, absolutely. Mr. Ross, I also met you uh, in an issue uh, that you cared about, uh, and that was water rates. And uh, one of the reasons that people aren't kind is because of the water rates. And you stepped in, Mr. Ross, not knowing any of us, and you rolled your sleeves up, uh, and you worked with us uh, to make the way that we distribute water and the way that we uh, repay for that distribution. You've made it different, uh, and along the way, you have added a common sense, blue collar approach to governing that I appreciate. I did not know you before, but I consider you to be a friend of mine now, I know that you aren't going anywhere. Uh, you've said that to me several, on several occasions, but I respect you as an elected representative. I respect you as one of our city fathers, and I look forward to you continuing to do the work that you started here on this diet, good luck to you, sir. Good luck to you, to your family, uh, and all of your future endeavors, and if I see you back on this council again, then that'd be okay as well. Thank you for your service. The last thing I want to say is, I wanna stick up for the guys now. I was counting, Mr. Osteen, I was counting. And I thought, I, I thought that one Sunday was June first. And then, then yesterday was a, a whole nother Sunday, and that was June eighth, that's two Sundays. And then next Sunday will be June the fifteenth, right? And that would be the third Sunday in June, and the third Sunday in June, the last time I checked was Father's Day. And so I want to wish every father in our community a Happy Father's Day. Uh, it is uh, a very difficult task to be someone's father. Uh, and we ought to honor those men who attempt to do that each and every day. And so Happy Father's Day to all of our fathers in this great, great community. Uh, if there's nothing further, uh, this has been a really good meeting. Mr. Loftus, you get, you, you stayed the whole meeting, it must have been a short one. Mr. Loftus, you get, you you stayed the whole meeting, it must have been a short one, wasn't it? I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, we stand adjourned.